Good evening. Welcome to the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting for this Monday, October 20th, 2025. If you do have your cell phones, I would remind you to mute them. If they ring while in the middle of the meeting, we'll stop and let you answer it and put you on the spot. I used to do that with my students. Please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. The Congressional Chaplain Reverend Dr. Sutherland on January 7th, 1862, gave the following to the Thirty-Seventh Congress. "O thou that seest from thy throne all inhabitants of the earth, by whose favor the nations flourish, as by thy frown they fall, we pray for thee for Suker at this time of need, as our fathers prayed before us. Give us the foresight and the discretion of thy wisdom, that we may know what to do and wherewithal to perform it. Imbue the whole heart of the nation with a religious faith, so that none among us may profane in any wise before thee. Fill us with the solemn spirit and the awful majesty of this crisis. Let every man forbear levity, that there be no trifling Nero in the midst of burning Rome; that each may be vitally in earnest, bearing his life in his hand, and moving gravely as a living sacrifice upon the altar of God and of country, of freedom and of religion. O thy sovereign of our hope, prepare thy servants and the whole people to vindicate in them thy sacred cause, thine honor and thy name, in the sight of all generations. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have the agenda in front of you. I do wish to note that there is an add-on on the approval of the consent agenda, item 2H. Item 2H is a request for applications, community-based substance use disorder services access. And that is on the consent agenda, item 2H. Any other additional items for the agenda?
Mr. Chair, if you could, I'd like to move under new business items 7B and 7C.
Move them where, sir?
To consent.
To consent. Motion's been made to move 7B and 7C from new business to consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Can I have an approval of the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And can I get an approval of the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Have a motion to approve the agenda as modified, please. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the proclamation presentation. And if I could have members of the Veterans Council and our new VSO, our Veteran Services
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to introduce you to Sarika Bennett. She's our Veteran Service Officer 2 and supervises our team, and we're very happy to have her. She's retired military, and she brings with her four years of filing claims for veterans. So we're really excited to have her in Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. And as a side note, we stole her from Moore County. The following resolution supporting Operation Green Light for active military service members in transition to civilian life, veteran status. Whereas, the citizens of Lee County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served their country and this county in the armed forces. And whereas, the contribution and sacrifices of the men and women this served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, Lee County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, Lee County's veteran population today totals 4,352. And whereas, veterans continue to serve this county in the Lee County Veterans Council, American Legion, Veterans of Foreign Wars, Disabled American Veterans, Marine Corps League, schools, church groups, and civil service. And whereas, two veterans serve on the Lee County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Robert Reeves and Mr. Kirk Smith. And whereas, a veteran serves on the Lee County Board of Education, Mrs. Sherry Lynn Womack. And whereas, Lee County is the home of the North Carolina Veterans Memorial and North Carolina Disabled Veterans Monument. And whereas, Lee County appreciates all the sacrifices made by our United States military personnel while defending freedom, and we believe affording specific recognition to them in demonstrating appreciation of their service to the honor and support. Therefore, be it resolved that the Lee County hereby declares, from November 4th through November 11th, 2025, designating as Green Light for Military Service, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our personnel in uniform transitioning from active duty. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, the Lee County Board of Commissioners encourages the citizens, in a patriotic tradition, to recognize the importance of honoring all those whose immeasurable sacrifices help preserve our freedoms by displaying a green light in their place of business or residence from November 4th through November 11th, 2025. Presented this twentieth day of October 2025 by myself and attested by our clerk to the board. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution supporting Operation Green Light.
We have a motion to support the resolution of Operation Green Light. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do, would, Ms. Bennett, would you, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I'd just like to thank everyone for welcoming, giving me a warm welcome at Lee County. I'm happy to serve the population here.
I do understand and realize that the seating arrangements for this evening are quite unique. We have this wonderful civic center that is quite busy, and they have to set up for various types of venues. So we're set up in a way that whatever they're doing tomorrow's going to have tables like this. So hopefully, you feel privileged. All right, the first item on the agenda is the public hearings on the UDO text amendment. And before we get started, the guidance on public hearings is quite simple. If you are for something, please come forward, state your name and your address. Let us know if you're for or against, and whatever comments you wish to make. Then, we will move on. Thomas Muirs, sir.
Thank you. Hello and good evening, County Commissioners, Planning Board members and staff. This item begins on page 64 of your agenda packet. We have received a text amendment application from Mr. Neil Gosh, an attorney representing a hotel developer, to modify Section 5.17 of our UDO relating to hotel development standards. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. It's not super in-depth, but it might be helpful. Currently, our hotel development standards require hotel buildings and parking lots to be located at least 50 feet away from any property lines shared with residentially-zoned property. The applicant has submitted language that would change our residential development, excuse me, our development standards, to allow for hotel parking areas to be as close as 20 feet to adjoining residential property if that adjoining property is at least 20 acres in size and currently vacant. Hotel buildings would still have to stay at least 50 feet away. And if, you'd be so kind if you could switch to the next slide, please. You have displayed there the current UDO standards and then the proposed UDO standards with the additional amendment in red text there. So it's really just an addition of one or two sentences, and maybe it's a caveat, essentially. This text amendment request was reviewed by the Joint Planning Commission this summer and given the okay to proceed to each jurisdiction. Sanford City Council approved this text amendment as written in August, and the Broadway Town Commissioners approved this text amendment as written in September. And just as you know, we have three jurisdictions that share a unified development ordinance. So the City of Sanford, the Town of Broadway, and Lee County must approve text amendments as written. If they deviate, we can certainly accommodate that. This specific text amendment was spurred from a specific issue that took place in the city of Sanford, and that issue has been addressed with the approval of this text amendment by the City of Sanford City Council. I will stop there for any questions they might have. I do have some additional slides, if you want to see them explaining how this issue came about. But suffice it to say, it was an oversight by the developer that kind of backed them into a corner, and they couldn't quite fit their hotel on a subject property. And this text amendment, with that 20-acre adjoining property caveat, allowed them to move forward with their development. And that 20 acre was carved out to limit how much of an impact this text amendment would actually change development rules. So I'll stop there for any questions you might have.
Questions for Thomas. Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Vorbit?
So I guess, I just want to make sure, so the City of Sanford took the, adopted the language of the adjoining property or adjacent property, so touching whatever the property is, correct?
That's correct, yes, ma'am. This was approved, this language that you see on the right side was approved by City of Sanford and Town of Broadway.
Okay. For, in the, the lot has to be, not the property in which that's being built on, or the property that's adjacent has to be 20 acres or more?
The adjacent property, if it is residentially-zoned, right? If it is over 20 acres in size, and if it is currently vacant, no houses there at all, then the hotel parking lot could be a bit closer.
Okay.
Not the buildings, just the parking lot.
Okay. Because 20 acres in the city is a little different than 20 acres in the county.
Yes, ma'am. So, I will say to that end, too, though, wherever a hotel could go in the county, they would have to rely, they would probably rely on Septic. They probably have so much space necessary, I don't know that this kind of an issue would really come up. That, it may, but it's more unlikely.
That's a good point. Okay, good point. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions. Thank you, Thomas.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Okay. We will move forward with the public hearing, seeing there are no other questions. Thomas? I now open the public hearing on the UDO text amendment request to revise the supplemental development standards for hotels, motels, and tourist codes, courts, excuse me, with the language following, except if the adjacent property is both vacant and larger than 20 acres in area in which a minimum of 20 feet separation shall be required between the property line and the parking areas. In such cases, the minimum separation between the property line, hotel, and motel buildings shall remain 50 feet. Anyone in support of this, please come forward. Anyone in opposition to this, please come forward. Anyone for? Anyone against? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to approve the UDO, excuse me, we have to motion to waive our policy on this one?
No, the Planning Board needs to go and meet.
Planning Board needs to go negotiate. Okay, and they'll bring it back at the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm sorry. The Planning Board is now excused. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your service to the county. I understand you've got more work to do over there. Please take care, be safe, wear your seatbelts, and no speeding. Next item on the agenda is the second public hearing on the need for emergency medical services in Lee County and the need for a franchise to cover those services. The last meeting, we did not have the MedX CEO present, and he wishes to speak, so if you would come forward, sir? Do I understand you have slides?
Yes, sir.
Stephen, you got those up? Please introduce yourself as well as your address.
All right, good afternoon. My name is Dylan Lo, I'm the CEO of MedX Medical Transport. My address is 121 Country Club Road, Ahoski, North Carolina. Just wait till this slide check gets up. Thank you. All right, so again, my name is Dylan Lo, I'm the CEO of MedX Medical Transport. I'm also a paramedic. I want to thank you all for having us here tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity for you allowing us to come speak. I wanted to start by addressing, I think there's some misconception that medics may be inexperienced, or we may lack the ability to provide adequate services or the same level of services as the current provider. In reality, it's the exact opposite. MedX is the most capable, the most complete, the most effective, and the largest ambulance provider in the state. I want to submit that there is no other provider that's capable to provide services at such a high level as us. Next, I'd like to show you a quick video about who MedX is.
When setting pattern, new department is ready. MedX is a trusted name in medical transport, serving communities across North Carolina from modern, fully equipped feet. This is transport domain, leading best and worst matters, all new vehicles, power equipment in every truck. An advanced technology to support faster, smarter decisions in the field. With over 40 professionals across 10 counties and 24 state operations, MedX is trusted by hospitals, emergency services, and entire communities. We're the exclusive provider for several major hospital systems, three of four VA medical centers in North Carolina, and the state's disaster response contract. But what truly sets us apart is our people. We don't just hire trained professionals, we grow them. Because at MedX, it's more than transport, it's real work, real impact, every day. MedX, prepared, equipped, ready to respond.
So as you can see, MedX is a well-established and experienced provider. Our reputation is built through long-term partnerships with some of the most, some of the largest major hospital systems in the state. Let's see, I, this slide should have messed up here, sorry.
One second.
All right, here we go. All right, sorry about that. All right, so our reputation is built on long-term relationships with major hospital systems. As you can see here, some of these include ECU Health, UNC Health, Wilson Medical Center, which like Central Carolina, is also a Duke Life Point Hospital. We're also the exclusive provider for three of the four VA medical centers in the state, the Fayetteville VA, the Salisbury VA, the Durham VA, and we're also the exclusive provider for the Womack Army Medical Center at Fort Bragg. Combined with these government institutions, MedX provides over 10,000 transports per year for veterans and active military men and women. So an additional point on this slide is Forsyth County EMS. MedX is a partner with Forsyth County EMS, and we run alongside them as a co-primary provider. We give them two 24-hour trucks, and currently, we're performing 7,000 calls per year, which is exactly in line with what's required with this contract in Lee County. So an additional highlight that's unique to us is we are also a national, oh, I'm sorry about that. This slide should have problems tonight. So what started in 2010 as a small, single-location company is now the state's largest ambulance provider, with over 400 employees, 100 ambulance units, and we perform over 85,000 trips per year. So right now, we have 13 franchises, and we have nine base office locations. So in this next slide, I made a map that will illustrate each of our locations and how they surround Lee County. To me, this is very important. If Lee County ever has a mass casualty, or if there's a spike in demand, any of our 100 resources and 400 staff members can quickly, within an hour, within 30 minutes, could come to Lee County and respond. And so we make available our resources to be shared, and that's what we'll offer here with Lee County. So in addition, MedX is also a major partner with some of the major payers, like Medicare, Medicaid, the five MCOs, and the four LMEs. And so you can see their, each of their logos here, we partner and accept each one of them. So an additional highlight is, MedX is a national responder for FEMA. We also have the primary contract for the North Carolina disasters. So what's important about this slide is, to me, this highlights our leadership capabilities. So in less than 24-hour notice this past year with Hurricane Helene, we deployed over 40 people and 20 trucks with less than a 24-hour notice, and they were gone for two weeks. And many of them were stationed in western North Carolina. So the specifics about the proposal, I myself put countless hours into analyzing and creating this proposal, and this is definitely, it's not a recycled proposal, it's not a reused template that I've used on another proposal. This was made specifically for Lee County. And so what we decided to do was to create two options, and this was created because it was well thought out of what are the needs for Lee County and what could be the best solution. So what we decided to do was present two options. Both of these options are designed to meet or exceed what's called for in RFP. So option one replicates exactly what's called for in the RFP, which is five ALS units stationed at designated locations throughout the county. Option two's a little different, so it's what we call a modern EMS system. So what we decided to do is provide all the strengths of option number one, but we added the use of our non-emergency fleet. We offered to establish a second base location in the county and a strategic spot to give better response, and we wanted to leverage our software. We have a very advanced software with AI capabilities, and so we wanted to implement all this, and the good thing about this is not only does it give Lee County more resources, but it's cheaper. And so one of the big highlights that we constantly were asked about in all the advisory meetings were solutions to what's current problem with these remote areas had a more than 20-minute response time currently. And so MedX offered four solutions. As you see on the left-hand side, it was a combination of software deployment, strategic placement of QR vehicles, and the leveraging of the second base location. So with this combination, we feel like we can greatly reduce the current delays that we're seeing now. All right, so here's the cost difference between option one and option two. So option one is 1.5 million, and with 5% increases each year, and option three is 1.3 with the same 5% increase each year. So MedX has had successful, long-term partnerships with major players, mostly because of our commitment to fulfill all of our promises. Tonight, we're making the commitment to you that MedX will commit to hiring any displaced employees, will have a service match of equal or greater service, there'll be a seamless transition, all trucks will be brand-new trucks, Lee County will be a priority, MedX will be, Lee County will be a priority to MedX, sorry, and leadership will be accessible. Each one of you will have my cell phone number, you'll be able to call or text me with any concerns or questions at any time. In conclusion, MedX delivers a modern, cost-effective, forward-thinking EMS system, one that has the advantage across every single metric. MedX has the advantage of a modern fleet with all brand-new units with zero miles. What we have now are mostly older vehicles that exceed 100,000 miles, and most or all reserve units exceed 300,000 miles. MedX has the advantage of all-powered patient handling systems. So each one of our trucks pictured here are equipped with power-load systems, which means you can load and unload the stretcher with a patient on it, up to 700 pounds with the press of one finger. And so that's great for patient safety, and it's also great for employee safety. MedX also has the advantage of modern software and technology. All of our software is AI-based, so it's got advanced routing and planning, it's got future prediction and demand analysis reporting, and it's got silent dispatch capabilities. It's important to note that recently before this, the incumbent did reach out to come shadow us, our dispatch department, because of our system. So MedX also has the advantage of lower cost. On average, there's a 23% lower charge than the incumbent. So the reason that this is important is because any invoice to a Lee County resident, after insurance is paid, in every single case will be lower with MedX. And additionally, MedX has the advantage of a $12.5 million tax savings. By choosing MedX, Lee County secures a trusted partner capable of delivering exceptional services while saving the taxpayers millions. We're confident that MedX is not only the best option for Lee County, but we're beyond confident that MedX is the best value for Lee County. I want to thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lo.
Yes, sir.
Questions for Mr. Lo. Commissioner Sharp?
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm good.
Commissioner Vorbit?
Hi, thank you for bringing that information. I'm going to probably put you on the spot, but I've got a few questions. So one of the things that I was approached last week at my child's flag football game by an individual who knew that I sat on the board, knew that this was coming up, and he was very upset that he sat at CCH for six hours with a heart rate of 29 after being told that he needed to be transferred to Duke for a pacemaker, and he was concerned that CCH was the problem, and his words were, "I will never go back to CCH." CCH is our area hospital. It's where, it's the hospital that we need to provide citizens a confident person to come into and want to seek help there. And he blamed CCH on not being able to get transferred out of the hospital to Duke fast enough. As you can imagine, a heart rate of 29 is kind of terrifying. And so I think in his mind, he really thought he was dying in our ER with the inability to come there. And he's not one, he's not the first person that's approached me about inner-hospital transfers. So I think that my first question to you is how, I know you had mentioned a second operating location, how would you handle? operating location, how would you handle interhospital transfers, and how would we mitigate a patient sitting in our ER for six hours, you know, after seeing their cardiologist at CCH, whose primary is there, and getting transferred out?
Alright, great question. So no, that would not be a Central Carolina problem. One thing that's important, and now that you bring that up, I think it's important for everybody to know that this franchise is an exclusive franchise, which is, that doesn't mean it's only 911. This is non-emergency, it's routine appointments, it's hospital discharges, it is the responsibility of the exclusive provider to provide adequate resources for all of these types of transports. And so that's what we would bring. And so we never have patients that wait six hours. Most of our contracts at most are based on 60 minutes. And so if we, we monitor trends, and if there's a trend that looks like we can't meet 60 minutes, add more resources. And so that's what we'll do here. So I would bring enough trucks for adequate resources, but if there was ever a peak, I would add more.
Okay. Because I, and one of the reasons I ask that is, it's kind of this catch-22 that CCH gets blamed for not being able to transfer, the transfers don't happen, and then people don't want to come to CCH. So then if they're capable and mobile enough and can speak for themselves, and the ambulance comes and picks them up, and they say, "What hospital do you want to go to?", they're not going to CCH, and we're the only hospital in Lee County. So they're, they're taking the provider, they're taking the patient outside of our county.
Yeah, we could fix that.
So I guess the other, you talked about active 911. How would that, I guess I'm a little confused on how that would work with our current 911 operation system.
Yeah, so we use that in Forsyth County, and it's actually really good. It's a supplement to it, and we would actually cover all this cost, it's actually relatively affordable. What it is, it's like a Patriot system, a modern-day Patriot system. It's an app that can be downloaded on your phone for first responders. So when a call goes out through the dispatch, it goes out to the first responders as well. And it's just your basic information, in which it allows them to be able to respond quicker. So it would give more coverage for your first responders, essentially is what that would do.
I guess my next question would then kind of be to Lisa, is that something that you think our 911 operated, like, I guess, does Forsyth County, do they handle their 911, or is it?
It would, it's exactly like this. They handle the 911, so it would be the exact same setup.
Yeah, because we don't handle our 911.
Yeah. But it's, it's made to integrate with that, so it could easily be added on. And so I know that it's something that could work. And like I said, MedX would cover that cost.
Okay. Have you ever had a contract where you were the primary ambulatory provider, and you lost the contract to an inability to provide service?
No.
Okay. Next question is, so obviously, there's a giant sticker shock value between the two You know, I've heard in the community, you get what you pay for, inferring that you guys are the lesser option, the less-better option. Is there any way you can be able to explain that how you're able to, I don't want to say guaranteed, because nothing in life is guaranteed, but how can you look at both proposals and believe that you're able to provide the same amount of coverage in the, in the response to all the different types of emergencies, non-emergencies, that come through the area?
Alright, good question. So I'd like to note also that our bid is double the current amount that First Health gets now. So it's not that we're way under a bid, it's their way over bid. So put that in perspective, when I submitted this bid, I was shocked that I was the hospiter, honestly. So there are many other forms of revenue that come from this. The provider gets to bill and invoice insurance for every single trip. And so I actually got an independent billing company to evaluate this before bidding, and they evaluate, there'd be at least $3 million more that we would get from billing insurance on top of it. And then there's the revenue generated from the non-emergency trips that's not factored. And so there's, what we think about 6,000 extra non-emergency trips that would also produce revenue.
Who covers the non-emergency?
It's the insurance.
The insurance provider.
That's right.
Okay.
So what you guys pay here is just a subsidy on top of all of that, of course.
Okay. Yeah, that, that sounds good. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Good questions.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Lovick?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said that you're 10 counties, is that correct?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yes, sir.
Out of those 13, how many are you the primary 911?
So mostly all of those are, were primary non-emergency. So we run co-primary 911 in Forsyth County, and right now, that's about 7,000 calls a year.
Alright, but how many, or are you primary 911 emergency in any of those?
Yeah, in Forsyth.
In Forsyth.
Yes, so how that, how that works, I know it's kind of confusing, it's a unique setup how they have it, is, is our trucks run as primary trucks. They're just MedX's vehicles. And so they're in their system, they're dispatched as primary units, and so...
So is that the same way you would do in Lee County?
Yeah, they would just be all of our trucks. But the way that it, it works would be the exact same way that you guys currently have it now. So we're very familiar with the exact same process. It is absolutely nothing new to us. We're very familiar with it, and without a doubt, we can handle it.
Okay, how many primary 911 calls has you, have you ran?
Seven thousand calls this past year.
Not calls?
Counties, Forsyth County. Yeah, Forsyth.
Seven thousand calls, 911 emergency?
In Forsyth, yes. And we do critical care level emergency trips in our facility. So we'll get, they're not county-based calls, but they're hospital calls where there are brain bleeds, gunshots, burns, very serious, high-level stuff, mostly a lot higher level, higher acuity than most 911 calls on a very regular basis. We're taking emergency in between. We also provide some emergency on Womack Army Medical Center at Fort Bragg. On base there, they have their own 911, but MedX also works alongside them, and we do take emergency lights and sirens in between. We take a lot of STEMI's stroke patients from one hospital to the next, lights and
So what I'm trying to understand, though, is you run some lights and sirens. I'm trying to understand, primary 911 emergency calls.
Yes, sir.
You're the main provider.
Yep.
You're the, you're the only provider for that county? How many?
None as the only provider. We run alongside Forsyth doing the exact same work that is required here.
So none where you would be the primary if you were?
Yes, sir. None as the only person, but we have more than enough experience to handle this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
You know, the nice thing about going last is, is that a lot of the questions have already been asked. Thank you, Commissioner Vorbeck. I do have a couple of questions, and thank you for your question. So if I understand correctly from your answers to Commissioner Lovick, I want to push a little bit more on this primary-secondary
Sure.
situation. If I understand you correctly, MedX runs with the primary provider in this county, in Forsyth County, is that correct?
That's right, yep.
If I understand you correctly, you're also saying that you regularly handle emergency situations, life-threatening emergency situations, gunshot wounds?
That's right.
And from hospitals is where you're seeing most of that, rather than?
Those critical care, very high-level calls do originate in the hospital. And what it is, is a lot of rural hospitals where they need a higher level of care, and so we have to quickly get there, get the patient, transport them to a larger hospital for a more serious type of treatment.
Let me ask you a question, if I can, about the software
Sure.
that you're, you're working with. It's my understanding that First Health has purchased some software that has helped them, and I'm, I'll tell you, I'm probably the one here with the least knowledge of our 911 system sitting around the table, but I would just want to make really sure that whoever handles the contract in this county is not bumping up against a functionality issue when it comes to our 911. So county manager, if there's something here that, that needs to be brought up, please feel free to jump in here. But it's my understanding that First Health purchased the, a software that works with our Viper system in order to close gaps. Is that correct?
The software worked even before we went with Viper, and it's still a work in progress to get it to full functionality. They're still working with GIS to try to get speed limits in the system, I believe. It's my understanding.
Are you referring to the mobile data, data terminals by chance?
Well, I can't answer that question, actually, but you could speak to that.
Yeah, well, I'll say this. I know that we use the mobile data terminals in the truck, and what that is, is a computer stationed in each truck, and it is synced with the dispatch. And so it allows us to receive information and send back information. And so that tracks where the vehicle's at at all times, it knows when we're arrival and scene, it knows when we leave, it knows everything. And so we do have those in our vehicles already, and those would sync up with your dispatch system, just as theirs syncs up with yours now.
I don't think I have any other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
And please remain in the hall because you may have to rebut something or come back to the podium.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we will now open the public, excuse me, this is the second public hearing on the need for emergency medical services in Lee County, and the need for a franchise to cover those services. Public hearing is now open. As a reminder, if you're speaking for or against, please come to the microphone, state your name slowly so the clerk can capture it, as well as your address.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Tim Sloan. I'm a former county commissioner. I also have 43 years in the local fire service here, serving on Cape Fear Fire Department. I was an EMT, and I'm also currently a board member of Central Carolina Hospital, full disclosure.
Address, sir.
Hi, sir.
Address.
424 Sloan Lane, Sanford, North Carolina. I just, as a concerned citizen and a concerned taxpayer, $12 million over the life of five years in a contract is hard to swallow. I know, I lived through when we had issues with EMS, and when, way back when the first, Lee County Rescue Squad filed bankrupts. The county fire departments and fire service stepped up, they all went to school, they were certified emergency rescue technicians to provide assistance in the event it needed with EMS service. And then Central Carolina Hospital stepped up, they had an EMS service. There were issues, there are issues with anything. But it's hard for me to sit here and vote, or I'm not voting this time, but would be to vote when $12 million can do a lot of good in this county and other areas, if not in this area. There are substations built that was planned a long time ago to house EMS units when I was a commissioner, that was 2014 through 2018, and there are still not ambulances placed in those locations, at Broadway, at Lemon Springs, at Deep River, in the rural areas of this county. And that was something I think was a sticking point when the original contract with First Health was discussed. I thought that would have been provided by now, but it hadn't, and so I'm concerned about that. But I also want to say, the hospital gets a bad rap, and I'm not saying that because I'm on the board, but I've been there, I've seen the service provided, they've got some of the greatest doctors in this state. The leadership is exceptional. I've been through four CEOs since I've been there. The current staff, the leadership at that hospital, they've made changes to the ER room, they are there for this community, and this community is growing, and we need to support them. And they have a relationship with MedX from the interfacility transport. That is a proposed benefit that this agreement could provide to the hospital. I mean, they've put that in there at no cost. I don't want to say I'm against First Health, because I appreciate and respect everyone there, but I'm concerned with the taxpayers' benefit and decisions being made. It's at their mercy where they take someone, when it should be, they take them to CCH and let a doctor make a decision. And I've lived that firsthand. And so that is a concern to me with us, the hospital losing business at the will of a paramedic. And I've experienced that. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing or a good thing, but I know that that should not be the current process and procedure. And so, you know, I wanted to ask for y'all to really consider, the $12 million is, could do a lot of good if, within EMS, within our county, in another means. And then the interfacility transport is provided in that agreement from MedX, so I would like for you to really pay attention to that and what it means. And when you talk about, I mean, they, I understand Commissioner Lovick's question about the primary responses. When you go from a hospital to another hospital with a gunshot wound, yeah, there's some primary care that has already been provided, but you're responsible for that person's life at that point, same as if you pick them up on the scene. So you can't just dismiss that, and I've heard comments about that, you know, being a concern. And so, you know, in closing, I would like for you to really, you know, go back and take a second look at that. And even if you would, look back 10 years at what the Fire Advisory Committee put in place and what the concerns were, because a lot of those concerns still exist today. The city of Sanford Fire Department, the local fire departments get called to provide lifting assistance or to respond because there's not adequate ambulances, similar to what you're talking about, having somebody sitting in the ER and can't be transferred because they don't have transport. That's unacceptable to me. But I know the benefit of what the hospital is doing for the community. I've seen it, I've experienced it with my own family, but I also see what they're putting in place to provide better service for this community. And so I don't want that to be dismissed in all of this. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Matt Presswood. I serve as president of First Health More Regional Hope, and I also have the privilege to support the EMS services for First Health of the Carolinas. My address is 67 Kilbride Drive in Pinehurst, and I am certainly for First Health EMS. Just wanted to share a brief update with you, one, on some of the capabilities of First Health, clarifying a few of the questions that brought up tonight, and then want to spend a bit of time at the end really walking through the cost of what it takes to provide the service. First of all, First Health Regional EMS has experienced 911 and interfacility EMS provider for more than 30 years. We have four different contracts as the 911 EMS provider. We have 56 ambulances and 268 employees. Those ambulances also have the power-load stretchers that were referenced earlier, and we're well-equipped to take care of all the citizens that we serve. We cover more than 3,200 square miles, and we responded to over 45,000 calls last year. There was a question also around the CCH transports, I think it's important to revisit that, we spoke a bit about that last time. As you all know very well, our current contract includes interfacility transports within the county. Interfacility transports outside of the county is not included in the current track, contract. We would be happy to, and we've spoken to CCH, to have the opportunity to contract with them to provide that service, but the contract as it stands today does not include those out-of-county transports. So just from a clarification standpoint, wanted to make sure that was clear. I think it's important a bit to talk about cost. We've heard a bit about that already tonight, and certainly that's important to everyone. As you all know well, in 2023, First Health made a significant wage adjustment for our paramedics, raising their starting wage to $28 and our EMTs to a starting wage of $21, which kept us competitive in the marketplace after counties like Wake Counties and others did so, so we could recruit and retain the best talent to take care of the citizens of Lee County. As you know and you've seen in the proposal, it requires a minimum of 45 FTEs, or full-time equivalents, in order to provide this service, which includes our supervisors and our director. So today for First Health Lee EMS, we have 24 EMT FTEs, or full-time equivalents. Their average wage is $27.16. We have 20 paramedic FTEs with an average wage of $35.32. When you include them plus our leadership team that is included as part of the contract, training, overtime, and part-time support to make sure that our ambulances are always well-staffed, the total salaries and wages for 2025 for First Health Lee EMS is $3.73 million. With that is an additional $747,000 that we provide in benefits to our team. If you take the wages of $3.73 million plus the 747,000 in benefits, that is 3/4 of the cost of providing the program. The remaining 25% is made up of the following. of providing the program. The remaining twenty-five percent is made up of the following: three-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand for capital, to make sure that we have new ambulances, and also the new equipment needed to provide excellent care, and other directly related expenses totaling one-point-two million dollars. And what that means is things like fuel, medical supplies, rent, fleet services, IT, and other directly related support services. All of this totals for two thousand and twenty-five, as an example, the cost to provide First Health Lee EMS is six-point-zero-zero-nine million dollars. The team that provides this service has exceeded every metric within the contract. On a response time target of nine minutes, they've done it in seven-point-five-five minutes. We're fully staffed with an academy pipeline to keep incredible talent coming into Lee County and make sure we remain fully staffed. We have cutting-edge training and technology, and we have successful first responder training programs and partnerships, including Sanford nine-one-one that was mentioned earlier. In your proposal, you have two proposals that would spread the costs in a couple of different ways, and we are more than willing to have additional conversations with you or answer any questions about those costs, and are more than happy to do so. As I mentioned earlier, First Health is a primary EMS service provider for four counties, and we meet or exceed every performance metric in the counties that we serve. Collectively, our experience among those contracts is eighty-six years of providing nine-one-one service. I thank you for this opportunity to speak, look forward to your potential partnership and continued support, and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Presswood. Commissioner Martin?
The number of nine-one-one calls that you responded to last year, last calendar year?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you get, can you?
We responded to over forty-five thousand for all four counties.
For Lee County only?
Oh, Lee County specific? If I don't have that readily available, I can get it unless one of my colleagues has it. There you go, ten thousand one hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all for me.
Commissioner Lovick?
So I ask you the same question.
Yes, sir.
You're in four counties.
Yes, sir.
How many of those four counties are you primary in nine-one-one?
All four.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Forbick? Questions for, questions for Mr. Presswood?
Okay, so, so you did, I think you, you sort of answered the first question I have with the interhospital transfer, so, to outside of our county, obviously, an interhospital within our county is kind of impossible because we only have one hospital. So that's not currently in the contract that you've negotiated?
With the county.
Or provided with Lee County, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. But things like transporting someone home or other facilities within the county, obviously not another hospital, is included in the contract.
So you had mentioned that you had spoken with CCH on what that would look like. Can you provide what that would look like?
Sure. I don't have the contract details in front of me, but that was actually a previous CEO that we discussed with right after being awarded the contract, and at that point in time, CCH chose to move forward and provide those services themselves.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So it would be an extra cost on top of what's already, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we would need to work through that with CCH.
Okay. And then, is there a non-compete with your current EMS EMTs? If, like, I know MedX had offered to, a seamless transfer on, do you guys have a non-compete that would prevent your EMS or EMTs to be able to take over their contract, or be able to, to switch if that were to happen?
Sure. So first and foremost, you know, our goal is to support our team, many of which thankfully have joined, joined us tonight, so we would have opportunities for them within First Health, and if they chose to go elsewhere, we would not prevent them from doing so.
Okay. And then, do you know what your, for Lee County, do you know what your non-emergency response time is for county trips?
I don't have that in front of me, do you know by chance, Mike, or Barry? I don't have that data in front of me, but we can certainly follow up with that.
Okay, that's fine. And then, I know, I know what our, I'm gonna, I'm thinking June, we had a meeting, like, you guys provided an update on response times and stuff, wasn't it like June, something like that? I can't remember. Anyways, I know, like, that it had, the response time is now within that slightly under eight minutes time, because you added another vehicle to the fleet, was that one of the things?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
What was the response time last year?
That seven-point-five-five is our response time within the last year.
Within the last year? What was it before then, though, do you know?
It was, it's always the metric of under nine, I want to say it was under eight, but I can get you that exact data.
Okay.
It's always been meeting the metrics, and we meet regularly with the county to review those metrics and make sure that we're continuing to hit them, and if there was any outliers, we would discuss that at the time.
Okay. And then, you had given me numbers, and I did my best to write them down, so I'm more just trying to understand them. So, just the one number of the, I think, three-point-five million or three-point-seven million in?
Salarial wages?
An employee cost?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that just for Lee County, or you're, that's all four counties?
That's Lee County.
That's Lee County?
Yes, ma'am.
So then, our contract for twenty-twenty-six, well, for twenty-twenty-five is, you know, just, just barely over that one million dollar. So I'm just trying to figure out how those two don't add up, so, like, to me, so I'm.
No, ma'am, they don't, but we have certainly agreed to and upheld our commitments within the contract. Those wage adjustments that I referenced in two thousand and twenty-three, certainly were not anticipated when we signed the contract, but commitment to this county and the citizens, we have upheld our responsibilities there.
Okay. And so, I guess going back to that, then, year one on the proposal is three-point-five million, which will not cover said cost of your, the employee wages, correct?
That does not include the revenue piece, so the piece that I shared with you earlier was the cost-specific. There's also obviously a revenue component of that within the transports that gets us to those numbers.
Thank you.
And to your point, the, the option of three-point-five has a bit of a higher cost year one, and a bit of a lesser cost the following years. The second option has a lower increase year one and a bit more cost the other years, and we wanted to provide, again, a couple options to you all, recognizing the budget implications there, and happy to discuss other options as well.
Okay. I think just really trying to hone in on that, the, being able to get, if our residents need to be moved into a more critical hospital, just, I mean, that's a, that's a big thing if people are sitting, it just, it doesn't, I think our hospital is trying to really make strides, and I just, I worry that this interhospital transfer, we're trying to get patients to where they really need to go, is causing a bad reputation for our hospital, and that's where I, I think that's, one of my biggest concerns, is just there's people sitting there waiting to be moved, so. And they just, I think, when you're in that moment, you're in the ER, you just feel helpless.
That's right.
So, I think being able to provide that without an extra cost to our hospital would be huge, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Sharp?
Yes, sir. Can you speak to why, why, in your opinion, why you think MedX can do a job over five years for eight million, and First Health, twenty million? Can you, do you understand my question?
I do, yes, sir. I, I think it's a fair question, and certainly I won't, I won't try to speak for MedX. I, I can tell you that our costs are the cost that we know it takes to provide the service. This is not about making margin or profit for us, it's about covering the costs. You know, for their proposal, I, I wouldn't propose to, to speak for them, I think they would have to speak for that, so I wouldn't want to make any, any guesses or, you know, conjectures there.
As everyone sees, there's a big discrepancy.
Yes, sir.
Do you think the eight million for MedX is doable, feasible?
Do I think it's feasible to deliver the same product that we have today? Not as we look at it. I think they would have to speak at that.
Thank you.
No further questions?
I've got one more.
Yes, sir.
I think I heard you say you would be willing to talk cost.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Okay, happy to talk with you all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lovick, what was your question?
Would he be willing to talk cost, negotiation on cost?
Okay, thank you.
Before getting awarded the contract?
We would be, there's a process, I think, for that, so I don't want to misspeak on the process of that, but.
Yeah.
So if we're ever the board, direct staff to negotiate the contract with, that's when we'll, I mean, we'll have to bring a contract back to you all, and that's when we will spell out the cost to the counties. I think what they've indicated, I think is what they're saying, is that they would consider discussing that in contract negotiations, which I'm assuming MedX would as well.
But it does not commit the board to that contract until they come back to it and adopt it, to answer your question. You are not, if you instruct the board staff to negotiate and develop a contract with First Health, and it comes back and is not satisfactory to your satisfaction, then you are not committed to that contract.
You don't, right, and you just have to have the two readings of the ordinance and a contracts, they all go hand in hand.
Clarification, because we have on the agenda, the next item is the first reading of the EMS franchise ordinance, we haven't decided, so.
So you don't have to take action on that tonight, that we just had, had it on there as the next step in the process, but if the board's not ready to move on that, they, you do not have to do that.
Thank you for clarification.
And if it's not out of order, Mr. Chair, if I need to wait till the next item, but I'd like to make a motion to table that item of the first reading and direct staff to negotiate.
We're currently in a public hearing.
Okay.
Hold that. Any further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else for or against? Please state your name as well as your address as you come to the podium.
My name is Richard Rutherford. I live at four thousand Blue Ridge Road, number one-hundred in Raleigh, North Carolina, and I'm associated with MedX here as a consultant. I'd like to address a couple of issues that have come up, that are very near and dear to my heart and very important. I'm seventy-four years old, hope to live another twenty-five years, and I hope never to spend an hour in a hospital waiting to be discharged. My mother got so frustrated with waiting in a hospital to be discharged, she started pulling her IVs out of her wrist in the bathroom so that she wouldn't be held up by some weight. If we have this problem in Lee County, how much is too much? I say one person is too much. One citizen is too much. And Mr. Low mentioned, when a, when a person who's a citizen of Lee County gets a bill after the insurance, it's one thing for the county to say, well, let's spend the county's money, let's spend that twelve million dollars of the county's money. It's another thing to say, oh, and this individual citizen of the county will have a much higher bill because the incumbent was selected as opposed to MedX. And let me thirdly address the question of sufficiency of MedX's bid. If you look at the growth in cost from what the incumbent bid and was awarded the contract, to what is in MedX's bid, and you consider that MedX has had major relationships with hard-bid federal and state contracts, and never lost a dime on one of those contracts, they have a sharp pencil, they have no debt, and they have plowed their money back into their enterprise in order to offer a very profitable but very sharp pencil bid to y'all. And they have earned their reputation for doing what they say, say it and then do it. And it may be that at the end of the day, MedX is lower than First Health because they didn't take a hard look at it, but I don't think that's true. Mr. Low has said that he had a, another company analyze the other business to be had in this county, and projecting out what was growing and the need for other transfers such as Central Carolina has mentioned, and decided that this is a, a promise he could make to you, and stick to it. And frankly, the question in my mind is, when a company that has been contracting with major hospitals and major hospital systems, and has met its promises, and has made money, comes to you and says seriously, yes, we can do this, I think that you should believe them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for or against? Any questions? No, no questions, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners, how are we doing? Thank you for your service and being here. My name's Ed Strickland, four-seventy-three Lower Moncur Road, also Deep River Sporting Clays, two-eighty-four Cletus Hall Road. I, I'm going to speak a little bit from selfishness because I have a son and a daughter-in-law who are career first responders, and I, I know what it takes to do that job. And, and I have, let's just go back in time to what we had before. Fortunately, I don't have many incidents, but I did have two incidents at Deep River, where one man fell and hit his head, another person had a seizure. At that time, thirty-two minutes before I had anybody on the scene when the gentleman fell in the parking lot with our road service, he, he ultimately passed away. The other person, it was forty-three minutes, and the, and the individual left before I even had anybody on the scene. I have an elderly mother, and I had an elderly mother-in-law who live in a, in a community, and I have seen the level of service that First Health has brought to those communities. I see it where they go out in that community and deal professionally, they offer unbelievable service to, to our, our community. When it comes to money, and unfortunately, sometimes we like to look at everything from a dollar perspective, but when somebody calls, they really truly don't care what it's costing, they just want somebody to be there. And, and First Health, from what I have seen, their level of commitment to this community, they've got fingers in the community, they're our neighbors, they live here. If I were coming up here to say you something, I would certainly show you my best side. And, and, and I don't, we've been able to see the scars and different things that CCH has had, but I really truly don't believe that First Health has let anybody down in this community at all. They have risen to the occasion, they're professionals, they have brought in professionals to serve on those buses, they're paying them well, and they're giving us the best, they're giving our citizens the best that we can ask for. And so, yes, money's important, but it's not the end of everything. The service that we have seen out of First Health, and, again, just as their, their involvement in our community, First Health is very involved in our community, they're in every event, they take care of of, of many, many aspects of our community, and they're civic partners. And so, I, I would, from, again, selfishly, ask you to really look back where we were, where we've come with the service that First Health has provided. The other thing I'll tell you, whenever I, I was concerned when First Health took over, because I didn't know what we were going to get, I knew what we had. And so, I called to talk to Mr. Dutton, and I said, hey, I want you to be aware of what we do here. And he said, I've already got that on my radar. We already understand where you're at, we understand what you do, we understand the location. You know, I said, hey, if you want to come out, I just want to bite you out. But he had already done the homework, they had already done the legwork, to be prepared in advance before I even called, and, and to me, that's a level of service and a level of commitment that you can't, you, you don't want to turn a blind eye to. And fortunately, fortunately, we don't have to have them out there, and we have a very, very safe facility, and, but, in the event, heaven forbid, I want to have confidence that whenever I pick up the phone, I'm not sitting out there for thirty minutes waiting for somebody to show up, and I've seen the response time, you've seen the response time, we all have the statistics and the numbers, we don't need to repeat those things, but their response time is unbelievable, and they offer a tremendous service to our community, and I hope you will consider just continuing with the road we're on, and, and giving First Health, let them continue to provide us the service that we've come to expect and come to appreciate from them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
I'm Chris Fraley, Vice President of Finance.
I'm Chris Fraley, Vice President of Finance at First Health. I live at 16 Valen Court in Whispering Pines. I just wanted to comment on the charges and the differences in the charges between Medex and First Health and then the amount that the patients of Lee County will pay. So 80% of the patients that we serve in Lee County have some sort of governmental reimbursement, Medicare, Medicaid, TRICARE, VA. So the amount that First Health has reimbursed and the amount that the patient pays is the same regardless if it's First Health providing the service or Medex. A differentiator, I believe, for First Health is our, as a nonprofit health system, we provide financial aid to our community. So we go up to 360% of federal poverty guidelines and offer discounts. So an example, an individual making $44,000 a year would have an 80% discount off of services that are provided by First Health ambulance. So just wanted to share those, share that information to address that, the comments made about the patient portion of the services that we're providing.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Good evening. Hello. My name is Matthew McBride. I currently live at 1206 East Point, right here in Sanford. I currently serve as a paramedic supervisor with First Health EMS here in Lee County. I was raised here in Lee County. My parents and much of my extended family still call this place home. I've spent my entire 15-year career as a paramedic serving the people of this county, and I take a lot of pride in being able to help my neighbors in their time of need. About four years ago, I went through a contract transition when the county changed EMS providers. I saw firsthand how difficult that process was, not only for the crews but for the county as a whole. Staffing became a massive hurdle, and learning a completely new system caused many challenges. Those challenges were handled promptly and efficiently by First Health. That experience taught me that changing systems isn't just a line item on a paper. It directly affects response times, safety, and the people doing the work. Since that time, First Health has shown a clear commitment to improving EMS in Lee County. During COVID, staffing shortages became a major issue. First Health didn't wait for someone else to fix it. They created a paramedic academy to grow and train local talent right here at home. When applications slowed, they responded quickly with a pay study and increased wages for all EMTs and paramedics, which helped keep positions filled and morale high. And most recently, they've invested in auto-loading structures for every frontline ambulance, a major step forward in both provider safety and patient care. But First Health's investment in Lee County goes beyond just EMS. They've made long-term commitments through First Health's medical facility on Beechtree, as well as multiple primary care and specialty offices, all of which strengthen healthcare access and support the overall well-being of our community. That shows me that they're not just a contractor, they're a true community partner with deep roots and invested interest in Lee County's success. Since I have been employed at First Health, I have never felt more confidence in an employer in my professional career. They have met every need and request that has been put forth to them by the employees and the community. As you consider this contract, I urge you to look beyond the numbers, consider the people behind the service, the medics who live here, raise families here, and are deeply committed to protecting this community. A transition to another provider may seem simple on paper, but it brings real challenges that impact both first responders and the citizens we serve. I want to continue serving with First Health Lee EMS. They've proven their dedication through action, investment, and continuous improvement. I believe that continuing this partnership is the best path forward for stability, safety, and the health of Lee County. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. This is a rebuttal?
Yes, sir. Hello. I'd like to make one more statement in the public hearing. My name is Dylan Low, address 121 Country Club Road of Hocksk, North Carolina. I would like to respectfully call into question renegotiating with the highest bidder. This goes well beyond the scope of the RFP. Also, would like to address the $8 million subsidy. I am confident without a doubt that Medex can do it for that price and be profitable. Our services with Forsyth County are comparable one volume, and we get zero subsidy. The only revenue we get is from billing the insurance, and we are profitable doing that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for, against?
Good evening. Mickey Foster, 295 Embree Road, Pinehurst, North Carolina. Serve as the CEO of First Health of the Carolinas. I want to thank the county commissioners for awarding us this contract several years ago. Also, would like to thank you and acknowledge your EMS committee that made us the unanimous recommendation for renewing this year. And I think as I addressed the commissioners last month, I am a Lee County native, born and raised, spent 30-plus years of my life in this county. So healthcare here, to me, is very personal, and we want to do it at a high standard. And in closing, I want to acknowledge Mike Dunn and our entire EMS team that sits behind me. They have raised the bar here. I could not be more proud of any EMS division we have at First Health. We're very proud of what they've done, and they've done a great job taking care of the citizens of Lee County. So I just want to acknowledge and applaud the staff for their work here.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on the EMS franchise? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed on the second reading of the emergency medical services for Lee County.
It was just a public hearing.
Public hearing for the franchise, okay. Public hearing, I'm sorry, second public hearing.
Correct.
Thank you. We're going to take a recess for 10 minutes. Stephen, if you could put 10 minutes on the screen, please. We're now recessed. So what I understand you say is due to the franchise ordinance that you wish to move to move to have Medex identified as the vendor?
That's correct.
That is the motion. Any further discussion?
That would be to prepare first reading with, because as it is written on the agenda tonight, it's for First Health based off of the EMS recommendation. So if the motion would be to bring a first ordinance with Medex, I think that we would have to bring that back to the board at the next agenda meeting, if that's the motion on the table. Because it's not, as is written, it's not prepared that way.
Correct.
The motion is to prepare for the first reading of Medex as the vendor for the EMS services for Lee County. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Can I have a show of the ayes, please? Raise your hand. Those opposed? Did you get that, Madam Clerk? Okay, we'll move on. Next item for public hearing on the proposed franchise to WR Sanford LLC, Liberty Waste Solutions LLC for construction and operation of a construction and demolition, debris landfill, and recovery facility. Next item for public hearing on the proposed franchise to WR Sanford LLC Liberty Waste Solutions LLC for construction and operation of a construction and demolition debris landfill and recovery facility. I am now opening the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. As before, please come forward, state your name, your address, if you are for or against the proposed landfill by Liberty Waste Solutions.
Thank you, Commissioners. Alan Rummel, 1001 North V Drive in Sanford. I guess I'm actually speaking on the fence on this issue tonight, if that's okay. And you'll understand why with my comments. So I do live near the proposed waste disposal site and like many residents, I do have some concerns about the impact. However, this proposal also presents Lee County with a unique and powerful negotiating opportunity to secure significant funding for our schools and other needs. Um, and that's what I want to focus my comments on here tonight. So the proposed site says it would serve. Their own, and that gives negotiating leverage. Uh, so Lee County has several projects on the capital list, or maybe former capital list, however you want to say that, um, with no short-term funding source in sight. Uh, I can tell you on the school side of things that we are exploding with growth and the recent projections said we would add over four thousand students to the public school system in the next decade. Data was provided, uh, supporting that, so I won't speak to that too much. And then also wanted to highlight that the county did give a two million dollar incentive, or whatever you want to call it, to a developer to deliver a target. So I think that same principle can be applied to this project. So I understand from a little bit of research, there are a couple of options here to, uh, generate some revenue from a project like this. And that would be a host fee and an inter-local agreement. Both of those things would be treated as a host community compensation. So basically that would be a payment to Lee County for bearing the environmental and social burden of such facility. Uh, the host fee is negotiated with Liberty Waste Solutions. That's noted in the application, so I won't spend a ton of time on that. But it is basically a per-ton fee that is collected by the owner of the site and then provided to the county. The inter-local agreement is the thing that I think could be very interesting. So that would be, that's direct negotiations between Lee County and then those counties that are in the service area. And this is a completely open negotiation, uh, that has to be done before a permit is signed because that's where your leverage is at. So, you know, Lee County can go to these other counties, like Wake, for example, who has an annual revenue of about one point seven billion dollars and say, hey, Wake, you know, we're considering opening a waste facility in Lee County. And if you would like to, um, would like for us to pass that and use that facility, you know, maybe we need a fifty million dollar payment from you guys to help support that. That payment could go towards some of those capital items, right? So with that permit as leverage, if you set, uh, again, just, you know, spitballing numbers, if you set a goal of raising two hundred million dollars from those twenty-three counties, um, you know, you could send out letters of intent and talk about having negotiations and see if you can raise that kind of funds to change this conversation a bit, right? Because if, if counties are willing to put up capital like that for Lee County to open the site, I think you would have to give a lot of consideration to it. The only other thing I wanted to really highlight was, uh, based on the application again, it noted three hundred and sixty-five tons per year for fifteen to eighteen years. So at fifteen years, that's about five and a half million tons that that site, I guess, can hold. Um, so when you talk about the host fees, just keep that in mind for the math. That's, that's a lot of money. The last thing I'll leave you with in closing is, uh, these host community compensation decisions are a hundred percent up to this Board of Commissioners, not your administration, right? You guys are the elected officials. This would be your negotiations. And I hope that you don't miss this opportunity when we have so many projects that need capital funding, um, and are considering giving a piece of our small county to take construction waste for the entire region. The Lee County, uh, Lee County needs this Board of Commissioners to be a strong advocate and negotiator for our interests. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone opposed? Please state your name and your address.
My name's Spencer Smith. Six thirty-two Amos Bridges Road. Forty-nine yards from the hole is my door. And my concern is my property values. And when this hill gets built across the road from my house, it's going to inundate my property with water. The first thing I'd like to say is how irresponsible this company is, is buil- is building this pit. They come there, they cut the timber. They left the ditches full of limbs, shoulder of the road full of limbs. Down the street, they wallowed out a hole, almost knee-deep with mud to, all the way to the edge of the property, uh, to the highway. They, uh, tore down a sign, one of the worst curves in Lee County. Sign was tore down, never put back up. And they, uh, well, I liked the ditches, like I say. They destroyed the churchyard across the railroad from me. And they deliberately trashed the place with limbs and debris from cutting timber. They strode the limbs out from where they was cutting the timber. And I think this was on purpose to call for ISO. Until they started logging the view from my house every morning when I walk out the door, nothing wrong with the view. Then this guy from city or wherever, riding around in his little car, talking about ISO or something, need to be done about ISO. Well, when he leaves riding around, he goes, sits at his desk, throws his feet up on the desk, and waits to find out something to go tell his next-door neighbor. You can't judge a book by its cover. You ride down the road, you say, oh, that don't look too good. But a lot of places in Lee County looks a lot worse. And if they only knew what was in them holes, or spent time in them holes, they'd say it was a beautiful place. I've been there for sixty-nine years, and I've seen a lot in them holes. These two eagles that nest behind me, behind my house, they nest there every year. And if you want to see something that's pretty or beautiful, just see the eagle that fly its first flight with his mom and daddy beside him. Every species of animal in central North Carolina is in them holes. It's not just a few deers, a few coons, cut off timber on the hill over there somewhere. These holes is holding a lot of, lot of animals and, and, and some of them is almost extinct. The traffic on Colon Road is bad. And I don't know if y'all know how many people's been killed on that road since January the first. Speed limit fifty-five on Colon Road, fifty-five on Amos Bridges Road. They come by my house, it's like a quarter mile, it's just like a drag strip. You get out on Colon Road, fifty-five mile an hour, go to Deep River Road, one of the shortest, straightest roads in the county, forty-five mile an hour. Colon Road's probably one of the crookedest. We got Noble Oil over there. You smell it, and it ain't only burning oil. I don't know who's, who's monitoring what's being burned over there, but it ain't oil late at night sometimes. I mean, you can smell the difference. The manufacturing company that's been built right through the woods. Car part, I don't know who, what their name is, but it's got a whistle. It's every evening about dark or a little after dark, it's got a real high pitch. It's not really loud, but it's a pitch, high-pitched noise that irritates you if you stand out there in that yard. Then we got to look at this dump for eighteen years. I know probably none of y'all can't hear it. Y'all can't see it, and you can't smell it. And, uh, Colon, for sixty-nine years, or as long as I remember, Colon's been like a second-class citizen place. It's been crapped on, they wouldn't fix the roads, and they still won't fix the railroad tracks. It's knocking everybody's cars out of line. And, uh, I don't think this company should be allowed to, uh, operate in this county. And if you want to see a ISO, what I call a ISO is four thousand houses on Colon Road dumping, dumping on Colon Road. And I think it's enough traffic and enough people been getting killed on that road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone for? I have an email from Debbie Hall, nine fifty-seven Cumknock Road, Sanford, North Carolina. I am writing to ask the county commissioners to design, excuse me, deny the application from Liberty Waste Management for a C and D landfill. Although this property is within a zone assigned industrial, it is still in the midst of homes, apartments, and two new hotels. Regardless of the precautions that Liberty Waste takes, there is still the possibility of contamination leeching into our aquifer. Lee County is growing so rapidly with residential and commercial building. This landfill does not represent the direction that I want our county to move in. Please deny this application. Thank you. And you add that into the record? Anyone else wish to speak for?
My name is Jim Womack. I live at sixteen fifteen Boone Trail Road in Sanford, North Carolina. And technically, I'm not speaking for or against, but I'll use this time as best I can for the benefit of the citizens of Lee County. I'd like to start by reading Article One, Section One of the North Carolina Constitution. It says, under the equality and rights of persons, we hold it to be self-evident that all persons are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among those are life, liberty, the enjoyment of the fruits of their own labors, and pursuit of happiness. And I know the chairman knows this extremely well, has used it many times, and I would like to remind the board that that is in our constitution. So fundamentally, that is important in the decisions that you make as the county commissioners about what you, what you allow or don't allow within the county. That we are blessed in this state to have protections by the constitution, be able to use land in the way that we want to. Now, I have, I have many friends and associates on both sides of the issue tonight. And I know I'm going to probably offend some or both with the comments that I'm going to make, but I do believe it's important that we shoot straight with the citizens of Lee County, our taxpayers, and in doing so with full disclosure. Okay, first, my wife and I own property in two other counties in the state of North Carolina. And we, this year, had two projects in which we had to do demolition and construction in those two counties. And I would like to say that in both counties, and I love Lee County, and I have no intention of leaving Lee County, but we do have property in two other places, and we did do projects in those places. And I found it very convenient in both those counties that we were able to take C and D materials free of charge to a site where we could dispose of it very simply, very quickly, and very effectively. And where it was recyclable materials, they took those materials and they can resell them for the benefit of whomever, either the company or the county, I'm not sure which. I just know that it's extremely helpful to have those kinds of facilities and not have to have that crap sitting in your yard forever or trying to find someone that'll take it. Just today, I was at the landfill, or at the waste management site on Boone Trail Road. And while I was there disposing of some household trash, I, I noticed that there was a big U-Haul panel truck backing up to the bin. He unloaded what I estimated to be over a ton of C and D materials into a traditional landfill bin. And he did that because it was easier for him to get rid of that construction and demolition into a regular landfill, you know, where you put your household trash and stuff in it, to fill it up faster and, and God knows how many of those that need to be closed off. But he was backing it up in there because it was more, it was cheaper and more efficient for him to get rid of it in a regular landfill than to, than to take it out of county and pay someone else a tipping fee to do it out of county. It's, you know, we need a landfill. We need a C and D landfill somewhere in Lee County. Somewhere where citizens can take their materials or have it transported to get rid of it or to recycle the materials that are recyclable that can be sold for the benefit of the citizens or the company that owns it. That's the first thing I'll say. The second thing is that the site in question off Colon Road is zoned heavy industrial. There's no question about it. And the company, when they purchased that land, had intentions of using it for some purpose, obviously. They're not stupid. But there are very few potential uses of that land, very few. In fact, I will full disclosure, from twenty-twelve to twenty-eighteen, when I served as this state's mining and energy and then the Oil and Gas Commission Chairman, at that time, we had our eye on that parcel, on that land, right there. Because that's where wastewater was going to be stored and recycled for the purposes of hydraulic fracturing in Lee County. That's where we were going to go. And I will tell you that when the state decides that we're going to drill in Lee County, a site, either that one or some other site, is going to be selected, condemned, and used by the state with no revenues coming to this county, zero. The state's going to take it all because the state has the control. In this state of North Carolina, the jurisdictions are not sovereign. The state is sovereign. And the, and we really don't have any say. Look at the regulations for oil and gas drilling. I will tell you that somewhere in this, this county, sooner or later, when drilling comes to Lee County, that there's going to be a site for wastewater recycling because it's a conservative thing to do. The frac water that comes back from stimulating a well has to be treated and reused for efficiency. You don't just stick it in the ground and cause, and cause earthquakes by, uh, by inserting wastewater by the millions of gallons into the ground. It's got to be recycled. I personally went to Arkansas and to Pennsylvania to go look at those similar sites up in those states at that time. And we had, we knew we had to have such a site here in Lee County. That was the place, right off Colon Road, because it has clay-lined pits that was perfect for that, and it's very little use for any other purpose. Now, when it was a habitat for wildlife, when the trees were there and the eagles were there, and there was great fishing and all that other stuff, when it was a great habitat for wildlife, you know, it, it served a useful purpose, uh, for that purpose. But for a heavy industrial, I'm telling you, you're going to get something you don't want. By turning this down, you're going to get something you want even less, uh, at that site. Because the fruits of one's own labors are accrued to the owner of that property. He is going to do what he's going to do with that land sooner or later, whether he gets the state assistance or whether he gets county assistance. So I just throw that out at you. Now, taxpayers and citizens deserve thoughtful deliberation and investigation into all possible uses. That's part of building a land use plan for Lee County. That doesn't mean you are carte blanche to tell people what they can and can't do with their land. That means you need to plan wisely and make decisions deliberately. And I would argue that for this piece of property, you need to take pause, not rush to judgment on what you want to do with that land. Think about the possible consequences of your decision. And I would urge you tonight to listen to all the feedback that you get. Listen to all the comments, and then take the time to investigate what people are telling you. And to, and to take public comment into consideration before you rush to a, a decision. Lord knows that in the last few years, we've rushed to a few decisions in this county, and we probably have lived to regret a couple of them. I'm not going to repeat those tonight. I just want you to take the time to pause, take pause, deliberate these things, and decide wisely what's on the best, in the best interest of the citizens of Lee County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone against?
Good evening. My name is Tom Darden, two five oh five Kenmore Drive in Raleigh, representing Cherokee Land Company. I want to speak against the landfill. So my family has been a part of the community here in Lee County for over eighty years. My grandfather ran Cherokee Brick in the fifties. My father took over from him in the eighties. I developed my first subdivision project here, just down the street on Amos Bridges Road back in two thousand and five. We own over a thousand acres in the immediate vicinity of the proposed landfill site, both the north and south side of Colon Road and directly across the street. So suffice it to say, we, we really care about what gets built here. And we're very much looking forward to working with the county and Saga and the city on determining the highest and best use for our properties, whether that's residential, whether it's industrial, commercial. But no matter what it is, our options will be severely limited if, if this landfill is approved. I want to speak for just a second about, from experience. We own some property in Durham that's immediately down the street from one of these C and D landfill sites. And I can tell you that I avoid driving on that road if at all possible. I'm talking about flat tires, speaking from experience, broken windshields, trucks running up and down the street all day. It's dirty, it's dusty, there's trash on the roads. And I can promise you that even if this company does everything in its power to try to keep the area clean, it's really just an impossible task. I understand that some of you may have toured one of these new facilities. I would encourage you to tour or at least look at pictures online of some of the existing facilities that have been operating for a while so you can get a feel for what it's really like. We think this area of Colon Road has a very bright future, and we are ready and willing to make substantial investments in this area. And I just ask that you not jeopardize, jeopardize that future by approving this landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and County Staff. My name's Jimmy Randolph. I live at thirty-four oh five Windmere Drive in Sanford, and I serve as CEO of the Sanford Area Growth Alliance. In that role, I've been directed to speak with you tonight on behalf of Saga regarding the proposed franchise for construction and operation of a construction and demolition debris landfill on approximately a hundred and seventeen acres of land at seventeen fifty-one Colon Road. First, Saga's leadership has directed me to clarify that the proposed landfill, which was introduced during the September fifteenth Commissioners' meeting, is not a Saga-led project. And the presentation you received that night was not made on behalf of Saga. During the presentation, the proposed landfill was characterized as an economic development project with a codename, codename Project Swan, which may have led some in the audience to conclude that this project was in some way endorsed or recommended to the Commissioners by Saga. That is not the case. Secondly, Saga's leadership is not convinced of the need for a C and D landfill physically located in Lee County at this time. Nor have we been approached by county leadership, our economic development staff at Saga for assistance in exploring the possibility for a location of a C and D landfill in Lee County or, uh, uh, the appropriateness of a C and D landfill at this particular site at any point prior to that September fifteenth meeting. If the county's leadership is convinced that there's a compelling need for a C and D landfill to be physically located in Lee County, we strongly encourage you to pursue a location somewhere other than the Colon Road thoroughfare. As you're well aware, the county has experienced significant economic development success along Colon Road since twenty nineteen. To say that the Colon Road thoroughfare is on the upswing would be an understatement, and the surge in positive economic development activity has not been accidental. It is a direct result of the county's and Saga's strategic planning and investments in that area. In a few short years, Barat Forge and Astellas have combined for more than three hundred million dollars in new capital investment. Tri Properties has constructed two new rail-served industrial facilities at the site of the former Cherokee Brick facility. And D.R. Horton has constructed hundreds of new residential units, with hundreds more in the works near the Colon Road interchange with the four twenty-one bypass. Inspired by Barat Forge's success, Saga has worked with other investors to create ready industrial sites proximate to the Forge site for supply chain partners or other advanced manufacturers, strategically located along the Colon Road thoroughfare just minutes from the US One Expressway connecting us to the heart of the Triangle. Economic development is, recruitment is highly competitive, and there are many variables over which we have very little control. If we lose out on a hundred million or a quarter billion dollar advanced manufacturing project because we can't supply adequate power, or because a company wishes to be closer to downtown Raleigh, or because we don't have enough of a particular type of housing stock, so be it. But if we lose a project because we chose to grant a franchise for a C and D landfill that we didn't particularly need on property adjacent to an otherwise prime industrial site, that would be on us. With the tremendous amount of effort that we as a community have strategically invested in creating ready sites in and along the Colon Road thoroughfare and successfully telling that story to businesses and site selectors around the world, it'd be a real head-scratcher if we chose to grant a franchise for a C and D landfill to any entity at such a strategic and potentially detrimental location for our future economic development efforts in northern Lee County. Saga's leadership does not believe it's in the best interest of Lee County, our citizens, or our future economic development efforts to grant a franchise for a C and D landfill in this location. We strongly encourage you to consider these implications before taking action on the application before you tonight. Thank you all for your time and attention, and thank you for your service and all that you do to make Lee County such an amazing place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
How are you all doing? I'm Jerry Pedley. I live at five oh nine Amos Bridges Road. I'm committed today for a better tomorrow. That's why I'm up here talking to you all. Remember that. I've been on the economic development boards since we met at Chef Paul's, and we were called a committee of one hundred. And I, and I've been blessed to be on many of those boards, and I've learned a lot of things. I appreciate Jimmy's comments about economic development. We're going full steam ahead, and it's been good for my business, and we need to keep it going full steam. We don't need one little thing to get in our way and make us go backwards. But tonight I'm here because I'm a neighbor. I got a lot of good neighbors here, and they've been my neighbors for thirty-seven years. And, uh, it's been an interesting area. When I first moved out here, I think we had five or six families on Amos Bridges Road. Now we have housing developments, we have school buses, we have everything going on. But as Spencer said, we had kids fishing there thirty-six or seven years ago in the nice pond. It was a nice area, and it was always fun to see the kids fishing, and we enjoyed it a lot. I get turkeys going through my yard every spring. The same, the same turkeys that go through Jimmy Love's yard, and he wanted me to bring that up. We've watched them all these years. He called me tonight and said he couldn't be here, but he's, he's definitely not in favor of this, this development. We got geese that land there every night. We got hawks, we got turtles, we got fish, wildlife all over. And I call, we've always called those areas back there called the lakes because it's nothing but lakes, and it's a nice area. Today, we have housing developments everywhere along Colon and Amos Bridges Road. A lot of good neighbors, as I said, school buses, motels are along Amos Bridges Road. People, there was a big Model A convention there a couple of weeks ago, people going back and forth on that road, so, so that was pretty good. We got churches. The city limits are everywhere around this landfill. They're on the north, south, east, and west sides of it, and we're getting more and more and more of it. And we couldn't end up with a C and D landfill in the middle of Sanford. It makes no sense at all to us. We have Carolina Commercial Contractors, ABC Supply, SBS Supply, Brickyard Junction, Northview Auto Sales, Barak Forge, the City Fire Station, Astellas, and Ammon Spiping are all located between Amos Bridges Road and US One or that exchange. So, so there's just a lot of things going on. Barak Forge is a major employer. Their land enjoys this landfill. The area's gotten better and better. Tom Darden was here. His family's just done amazing. When Tom was a, his father was a young man, he was fishing out in those ponds, and he, he still tells about it. They have the Cherokee Fund, and they're committed to developing that area. As, as he said, they had, they have a thousand acres out here, and it, it can all be developed. It's between Raleigh and Monqueer and Sanford. It's going to be a big connector, really, really important. Another thing we have is a place called Central Carolina Community College. We've got fifty-eight community colleges in this state, and ours is the best one, right here in Lee County. Then we have Central Carolina, Enterprise Park. It's probably the best industrial park in this state. What connects them? Colon Road. And we want to put a landfill along there? Come on, folks, that, that just is not good for our business. It's not good at all. It's an important road for everyone. Wall Recycling bought it in two thousand, or twenty twenty-three, as Spencer said, and they immediately trashed it. It, it looked good before that. We had people fishing. We don't know why they left it like that. Maybe there was plenty of things going on. But what I do want to emphasize is not the right, I don't want to criticize Wall Recycling or anybody else. It's just not the right location for a landfill. It's just not the right location. Let's not go backwards. Let's keep going forwards and keep going full steam ahead. So the location is not right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Parade of former Commissioners.
Jamie Kelly, nine thirty-seven Valley Road here in Sanford. About seven generations from, from Lee County. Former county commissioner and sit on various boards right now. Just wanted to ask the question, where's the need? I remember the reason I got into politics in two thousand and eight was because of a landfill that was proposed on six hundred acres behind four hundred acres that my family owns. And I do believe that the company was trying, they were willing to throw twelve, fifteen million dollars at my family and, uh, just to, just to get us to shut up and go along with it. And that's, that's not who we are. So this day and age, it went about a year and a half, and when I was on the board and we, we closed a C and D landfill in Lemon Springs because we didn't have, it wasn't doing enough business. That C and D landfill is still there, and it's not at capacity. So if we need this big push for a landfill, reopen that landfill. There's, I mean, get the tipping fees from that if that's, if that's the case. So I'm just trying to imagine a landfill on Colon Road and having a truck per minute. That's, that's the average, a truck per minute hitting the landfill. And all the mess flying out of them, people, I mean, they're tearing up our roads, and we've got our industrial park there, we've got these communities, Madamy Homes is just, they're putting twelve hundred houses out there, and they're, I mean, we got everything going on the right way. I don't, I think that would be a huge mistake for our community to do that, especially when we have something that you could reopen. So my perspective is I would, I would deny, and I thought we had this settled a long time ago, but I would definitely deny the application impermits for, for the landfill. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, members of the Board of Commissioners. My name is George Young. I am with Madamy Homes. My address is eleven thousand Regency Parkway in Cary. Jamie referenced Madamy Homes in, in his statement. We have been very purposeful in locations that we have selected for our developments in and around Sanford, the Triangle Market, Harnett County, Johnston County, Wake, and Lee. And in our efforts in Lee County, we selected several sites over just off of Colon Road to make a substantial investment that would increase property values in that area and bring you a tax base of roughly half a billion dollars. We have not closed on that property. We have been working diligently with staff. We have rezoned it. We are working through our construction drawing stages. But I can tell you, if this use were proposed prior to us moving forward with our project, there would be some question as to whether we would select this location, which has essentially been, you know, is being planned as a really substantial gateway to Sanford on the north side. We are excited and have partnered with many of the families that you see behind us, some that started as opposition to our development plan. We have deliberately worked with them and staff on our proposal. They are excited about it. We are now, you know, walking arm in arm together in, in our plan and also in opposing this dump. This would be detrimental to this area of Sanford, and we stand here to oppose it on behalf of Madamy Homes. So thank you for your time, and we'll look forward to seeing you turn this one down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Grant Kinnear, six oh five Hogan's Valley Way, Cary, North Carolina. Also a landowner, Lee Avenue as well as Colon Road. Echo everything that was said before, before me here. This would kill the growth in this area. We are excited about this corridor and those types of investments that are going to happen there, including ours, working with Saga, other landowners to create something special in this area. And this, this will just absolutely kill that. I think these landfills are needed. There's no doubt about that. Like we mentioned, there's one already open. But I think we can find other places if we truly feel the one that was closed is not sufficient. So appreciate you guys' time and consideration on this important matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Steven Sloan. I live at fourteen forty-eight Colon Road, about a hundred yards from where they want to put this dump. Been living there for fifty-two years, and I got grandkids, and I can't, if they come, I won't be able to let them out, play in the yard because all the dump trucks and the roads will be tore up, and I don't feel like having a grandkid killed. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the County Commission. I'm Bob Joyce, three thirteen Westport Place in Sanford. And I'm here to speak in support of drafting a franchise agreement with Liberty Waste for development of the C and D landfill. I have many friends in this audience who feel differently than I do, but I believe that there's another side to this coin, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about it. First, let me say this is not a garbage dump. There's no household or business or industrial waste deposited or recycled at this proposed facility. We, we offered a field trip. Some of you were able to go. And I think those that were able to go would agree with me that what they saw was a clean, well-kept facility. There were no bad smells. There were no seagulls. There were no pests. There was no noise off-site. In fact, the, the site itself was almost invisible from the road. This is not a municipal waste dump. The, the only materials deposited in the ground at this site will be things that came from the ground, brick, concrete, sheet rock, wood waste. No garbage, and fifty percent of what comes in the door will be recycled. recycled. The site, as Ben said, vacant, used for mining brick shale for years. When I was a kid, it was certainly a working brickyard. It's currently zoned heavy industrial and in our community, that is the most intensive zoning use for any parcel. And this parcel has been classified HI for decades due to the history in that area, due to the two railroads, Norfolk Southern and CSX, that essentially are on either side of the property. So, just a reminder that other uses are allowed on this parcel include chemical operations and refining and steel milling, fabrication, food processing, and any of those uses could begin construction of a factory tomorrow without any further approval. So, the site is consistent with surrounding zoning and the historical uses in this area. The company proposes to create twelve to fourteen jobs, good jobs, competitive wages, good benefits, and the company will invest twelve to fifteen million in the initial phase of the operation. We think the facility provides a great operation and a less expensive one for the generators of construction waste, the home builders, county residents who are remodeling, general contractors for large projects, even Lee County, all of whom currently ship their waste out and pay for it to be shipped. Plus, this is a good quality company and you'll hear more from, from the company in a minute. A couple of other points about the benefits of the facility. I believe it is an economic development asset as other community facilities are. Good EMS and public safety, good quality of life, good schools. Having these types of facilities is good for industry because industry produces waste, the same as general contractors and home builders. A couple of cases in point are Barat Forge's recent, recent addition of two hundred thousand square feet right next to this site and also the proposed complete redevelopment of River Bird Shopping Center with the demolition of about two-thirds of it. The C and D landfill is, is one of the best uses for the site. It is also one of the least intrusive and here's why. Under our zoning rules, we require a two-hundred-foot buffer around the adjoining roads. So, along Coen Road and Amos Bridges, there'll be a two-hundred-foot buffer plus a six-foot burn. So, two-thirds of a football field back from the road before the, before the site even begins to be developed. Where there are houses abutting the property, and there are two, the setback is five hundred feet. This essentially screens off the entire site from anybody traveling along Coen Road and Amos Bridges Road. Second, the, the landfill in this case is divided into two sections because you've got a railroad track down the middle of the property, essentially sixty percent of the acres on one side, forty percent on the other side. So that the area that will be dug out for the landfill is less than fifty-five acres of a total of one sixteen. Those unused portions and buffer area will be natural. Third, the traffic generated by the site is something that has come up many times. Based on similar sites across the industry, including here in our state close by, approximately five to ten trucks per hour. The hours of operation are regulated in our zoning rules. So, it's regular working hours, seven-thirty, five-thirty, ten hours a day. So, two trips per truck, one truck, one trip in, one trip out. And then you've got some employees coming to work, going to lunch, coming back. So, you're looking at about two hundred and fifty trips a day. By comparison, the growth in housing, which is occurring in our county and which will occur in this area, will add at least twenty-eight hundred trips for the subdivision that's proposed nearby. So, the facility, the landfill facility will add almost no disruption to traffic flow. An internal road across the railroad tracks is part of our proposal, which will limit the movement of heavy equipment from one side of the property to the other. Noise has come up as a question. Again, for those who visited the site in Randolph County, you heard absolutely no abnormal noise around the site. There are normally two or three pieces of equipment operating and only during working hours. So, for these reasons, the zoning is correct. There'll be adequate setbacks, minimal traffic, low noise. We think this is a good idea for this site. You'll hear from company folks in a minute about the volume of the waste, the expected life of the facility, and the post-closure requirements. Finally, at the end of its life, so at the end, end of life is fifteen to eighteen years, this site can become a park with trails and play areas. We also took a group to see a landfill turned into a park in Northern Wake County, Green Hills County Park. It was a municipal solid waste facility and is now a seventy-six acre park with walking, biking, running trails, family picnic grounds, et cetera. We saw kids playing. We saw people walking their dogs and that could be the end result here. We think that the idea of a C and D landfill on this site is consistent with Plan San Lee and also the goals of our community to create more recreation. This one would come at no cost for the county or the city. And while fifteen years may seem like a long time, that was just two thousand and ten. So, it happens in a flash. And as we continue to grow, we're going to need new parks and open space. And rather than having the county have to go buy farmland or timberland for that purpose, here's an opportunity to partner with a great company with a great track record to redevelop a blighted piece of property and turn it into a community asset. So, we recommend that you let us continue to provide information as you gather it and develop a draft for your consideration and determine what other benefits might be available to the county. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Darrell Parker. I live at three zero five Hemlock Drive. I didn't really prepare any remarks, but my daughter and I are here to say we're opposed to this dump being placed on Amos Bridges Road. We live about a few hundred yards from the site and just, just in our area of Amos Bridges Road, this is a pretty blossoming residential area. Phase two for the community that we live in just started and they're building forty new homes right off of Amos Bridges Road, a few hundred yards from this site. And, you know, sites like this impact home values. We've all worked hard for our properties and for our property values and for something to come in that might not be of real use, it's a shame to do that. And I, I heard, did hear someone mention environmental burden earlier. And that's something that we have to worry about too, is residents of the area runoff. We've seen fires in locations like this, like in the location in Raleigh that burned for over a week, poisoning the community. And this is just not the right place for a, a dump. And I realize this is not residential waste, but still it comes with, as the gentleman said earlier, potential for environmental burden. So, we oppose and we feel like that's the right vote for this. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Rick Prather. I live at sixty-six seventeen Swallowdale Lane, Raleigh. I am the CEO and one of the owners of Liberty Way Solutions. I come before you tonight, not only as a CEO, not only as an owner of the company, but a former resident of a, at the, the foot of a landfill in Wake County, only within yards. So, a number of individuals that came before you tonight have talked about the potential impact. I can speak to it specifically. My property that ultimately sold increased in value. There are multiple thousands of homes that are adjacent to the Green Hills County Park that has been referenced as an opportunity to, to visit. It is a thriving area and a need for the infrastructure within Lee County. So, we obviously believe this project is beneficial and we, we offer why it's prudent and important for you to consider partnering with Liberty Way Solutions. Our first and foremost interest is in recycling, not in landfilling. These items that would ultimately go into the landfill are items that's been referenced that come from the ground, but we take in debris whereby, you know, concrete is crushed to create rock, tree debris is ground to create mulch, soils are created into topsoils, ultimately offered back into the community where they were generated as well. Lee County is a hundred percent neck exporter of their waste currently and this gives an opportunity for economic value relative to decreased cost for disposal of these products, you know, within our company. So, our industry is often misunderstood because misinformation, stereotypes, and simply the fear of unknown. I've been doing this for over thirty years. We built this organization, which was a family-owned and ran organization that I led and ultimately partnered with allied industrial partners roughly two years ago because of the belief of sustainable solutions not offered by many of the waste haulers within the state, you know, and, and in the U.S. We believe in sustainability, trying to create value of those products, have them go back into the environment or the communities that we serve and not have a negative impact on the environment. We believe in this specific parcel of land that's being selected is that it's offering an alternate solution with an operating life of fifteen to eighteen years that only impacts a portion of the property, leaving large buffers for the neighbors and the wildlife. The wildlife has been referenced a number of times. Any other development that were to occur on this property would largely consume all of the property. In our case, will consume roughly forty-two of the hundred and sixteen acres, allowing for wildlife to continue to thrive in the environment that they reside today. And if not us, you know, who would it be? You know, yes, the, if not us, the property would likely and would be sold and it would, it wouldn't be maintained in its current form, again largely being impacted beyond its current level. You have an opportunity that the state created that's extremely unique. If it's any other entity, they could come as referenced before and start construction tomorrow. Because of the type of service offering that we provide, the state felt it prudent that we be required to come before you, the Commissioners in this case, to help be a partner in this process to ensure that it's developed in a constructive manner that's consistent with the various needs of the community and the opportunity to play a role in that, however you deem necessary. Once this project is complete in a finite period of time, it has the ability to be turned back over to the county, the city, a nonprofit for the full hundred and sixteen acres to be enjoyed at a timeframe in the very near future whereby both your grandchildren and your grandchildren's children would be able to enjoy that. There is a thirty-year post-collection or post-closure requirement whereby whether it's turnover in the form of a park or not, that we are required to maintain it and monitor it for thirty years. You know, this site is, is of value to us relative to the environmental positive impacts. This is not a dump. Let me repeat, this is not a dump. This is a state-of-the-art facility that is highly regulated by the state and the manner of which we have to operate it. And, you know, some of the information that's been provided of truck traffic, we estimate it between five and ten per hour. It would have a low impact and be consistent with the industrial setting that's already established there. There are many different landfills that, that are offered within our country. Municipal solid waste landfills that handle your traditional garbage, industrial landfills that handle special waste, hazardous waste landfills that handle dangerous materials. We're simply proposing a construction and demolition landfill that's typically called C and D for those items such as wood, concrete, bricks, steel, all of which come from construction activities and renovation processes that are largely consistent with economic development whereby we would play a role in that. You've had an opportunity to visit the Ashboro County landfill that we're very proud to partner with the neighbors. If allowed, I would like to submit three letters, both from residents of the Ashboro landfill, that have deemed us to be good neighbors, good partners. It addresses the impact of their property. We further have a letter from Mount Camber, Mount Cavalry Mission Baptist Church, our neighbor to this property, that is in support of it. And then lastly, we have a letter from the section chief of the Solid Waste Department of State of North Carolina, speaking to our compliance history and why we are a good partner, if, if I may submit that.
Yes, sir. We'll get it to the clerk.
I'll bring it over as soon as I'm-
Yeah, that'd be fine. If you don't mind, are you finished?
I have just two more comments, yes, sir. So, you've, you've had an opportunity to, to visit the site. You know, Liberty is a large enough company to, with the experience and financials, to pull this project off. And we believe it's very important for the environmental impact and what we can do for the area that we serve. The board has some very tough decisions to make. These are not easy ones. The, this will be a bold decision by you and we are open to any further tours, conversations, meetings, that we can answer any questions that you or the community may have in response to the project. And I'm willing to answer any questions you may have as well.
Yes, sir. For full disclosure, I was on both tours. I took notes. I took pictures and shared them with each board member. So, at this moment, seeing that you're here, would board members like to ask questions? I'll start with Commissioner Sharp.
No questions.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Commissioner Borbit?
How many jobs would be at this location?
Twelve to eighteen, paying roughly seventy-five thousand dollars per year.
And then, so one of the other questions, I know we had, I know we talked about it before and was talking about the recycling. I know you said that you would be working on or that be one of the focuses, recycling the material that comes onto the land. Is there a tax incentive that you get for a certain percentage of recycling material that you're able to create? Does that make sense?
Zero.
Okay. There's no tax incentive out there for if you, if you create, if you have recycle or the abilities to recycle, you don't get a tax break for the county?
Not, not that I'm aware of. No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Luffick?
No, I, I was able to tour both facilities. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
No. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Who, who may I give?
Right over here to the clerk. She'll get copies for us. Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on the topic?
Hello. My name is Steve Malloy. I'm twenty-six fifteen Bill Air Drive here in Sanford. I'm also with Adcock Real Estate, a leading firm here in Sanford. First of all, I want to say, quote, I want to do something that probably hasn't happened in a board meeting for a while, is I want to paraphrase William Shakespeare. A dump by any other name is still a dump. So, but the main thing is, there's good, those, this use is needed. It absolutely is. It can bring economic advantages to the community. But we've heard, there's another location that it could go on. We all know that Coen Road is becoming a great growth area for Sanford. We have industry coming there. We have- Sanford. We have industry coming there. We have residential coming there. At that intersection with the bypass, there's going to be commercial development. And here's my problem with it. The Real Estate Commission of North Carolina says we have to disclose to every single buyer anything that might affect their decision to buy a property. And I totally agree with that, and we go above and beyond to disclose that. It's called disclosing material facts. If we, anybody buying homes in the new subdivision, industrial land that Cherokee Brick owns or anywhere else in there, every single one of those people, we're going to have to tell them there's a landfill nearby. And that is going to affect property values and sales. So, yes, you might get economic returns for a site there, but it's going to be more than offset by lower prices in the properties around and nearby, in my personal and professional opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? We still have room. Good evening, sir.
I'm Dennis Wicker, Alleva 1201 Burns Drive in Sanford, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity and privilege to make our case to you about why Liberty should be while Liberty should be considered for this application that's been made before the board. There are three, I think, compelling reasons why the Board of Commissioners should negotiate and grant to Liberty a franchise agreement for the purpose of operating a recycling center and a CD landfill at the site. The first reason is the best option is to use this property as a landfill. Remember that the zoning at this site is heavy industrial. If this request by Liberty is turned down by the board, please understand that this property will become available for other possible uses, such as a junkyard, a chemical plant, and even a slaughterhouse. And I'm not fear mongering when I say that to you. This is a real possibility. A real possibility. Second, this is a win-win for Lee County citizens. Our proposal would not only turn an unattractive, pockmarked site into a job-creating, thriving economic enterprise like the ones already surrounding the site. But also, I keep hearing nothing about eventually transforming this site, and this is important. This is really important. This site would eventually transform into a beautiful park with biking and hiking trails for our citizens to enjoy for generations to come. Not to mention, not to mention, also becoming a thriving wildlife refuge. That hadn't been mentioned much by the opponents, but there you have it. And I hope you heard it. Third, this is the best opportunity for Lee County to have in creating a wonderful asset for the community that will set us apart from other communities. It's been a long night, and I'm just going to wind up my remarks saying this. Liberty Solutions, Waste Solutions deeply desires to be a part of our community, running a clean operation as a good neighbor, bringing good-paying jobs, and providing a needed service. You know, I've given a lot of thought about the tough decisions that our past local elected officials had to make, such as whether or not we relocate our water source at the Cape Fear Basin decades ago, or our quest to establish a community college in Lee County, or the merging of the city and county school systems. I've given a lot of thought about what it was like to make those tough decisions back in those days. And I recall that these decisions were challenging. There was fierce opposition to them, but you know what? Those elected leaders back then, they stood in the gap. You know what I mean when I say they stood in the gap? They did what they thought was right and what would be good and positive for the community. Members of the Board of Commissioners, make no mistake, you are facing the same challenge on this issue today. I would submit that your support of this economic development proposal that will bring a beautiful park to this county will be positively felt by future generations of Lee Canyons, who will forever be grateful to you for your foresight, your courage, your wisdom, and your vision meeting this challenge. Thank you very much, members of the board. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Lieutenant Governor? Commissioner Martin?
None. Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Warbick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I'm good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Still have openings available at the podium. Public hearing is still ongoing. Anyone else for? Anyone else in opposition? Are you coming forward, sir? Is there anyone else before we close? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed on the application for operating solid waste disposal site in Lee County. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is-
Are we voting on this tonight? Or, I forgot how that works. Do we have to wait another week? Or can we vote? We must wait?
We don't have the first reading or anything prepared for this. We just put this on for the public hearing.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Next item is public comments, and I'm looking over the list of public comments, and I have EMS, dump, dump, EMS, dump, dump, recycling, and recycling. So, public comments were all made during the, unless you want me to call you forward again. Mr. Sloan's left. Spencer Smith has spoke. Jeff Couch. Jeff Couch is not here. Ed Strickland spoke. Jerry Pedley spoke. Jamie Kelly spoke. Bob Joyce spoke. Tom Darden spoke. Okay, we're good. Moving on. Old business, we didn't have any. New business, we have one item in his presentation on the economic impact of the Lee County Athletic Park. Thank you, Wendy, for your patience.
Thank you, Chairman Smith and Commissioners, for inviting me tonight to share some data from the Sanford Tourism Development Authority related to the Lee County Athletic Park. So, I have a few slides for you, but they have a wealth of information. I'm gonna hit the highlights, and then I'm glad to take questions. We're gonna start with a pretty wide view of the three data points that the Sanford Tourism Development Authority uses to make decisions about where our visitors are coming from, what would be the most effective way of marketing to them, and what our priorities are. So, where are we going to spend our dollars to try to inspire that tourism visit? So, first thing we use, and I think there's a clicker up here for me to advance. There we go. The first thing we look at, like I said, the widest view is the North Carolina Tourism Spending Report. It comes out once a year. We receive usually the county-by-county data in August each year, and that tells us overall how our visitor spending is trending in several categories. So, this year, if you'll advance the slide to the, just a couple of facts from this year's report. Visitor spending in Lee County in 2024 was $104.59 million. That was up 9.5% over the prior year. And of course, we watch our accommodation spending closely, but for several reasons. It's an indication that visitors truly travel more than 50 miles, far enough away to spend the night. And also, of course, we all benefit from the occupancy tax that our accommodations levy. So, this year, that total spending on accommodations was $22.6 million. The 9.5% increase, I have those stars there because that is number one, we were number one in tourism spending increase in our prosperity zone in the state, I mean, in our prosperity zone. And we were number nine in the state for increased tourism spending in 2024. Now, our prosperity zone includes Chatham, Durham, Franklin, Granville, Hornet, Johnston, Nash, Orange, Person, Vance, Wake, Warren, and Wilson Counties. So, that's a great accomplishment for our partners, our tourism partners who provide those assets that draw people here. And we're very proud of that, along with our efforts to try to draw the visitor. So, again, there's other data in that report. We look at how much we had in food and beverage spending, how much in transportation spending, and how much in retail. Our next report that we look at is a report that I receive weekly, the CoStar Report, or the Star Report, as you'll hear referenced. That is our overnight stays at our hotels. So, the TDA gets a compiled report of all of, not all of our properties, but all but a couple of our properties, because we have to say this is our cohort group of properties we want to look at for occupancy. That includes percentage of occupancy and the daily rate, and both of those things, of course, impact how much revenue we have. So, I put together just the trend in our occupancy from the beginning of this year, 2025, till now. That's on the next slide. I do get this in its prior year to current year. The properties you see on the left are the properties that report in on our report. Now, every property in town gets their own star report that shows what their occupancy is at their hotel, and of course, you know, how their daily rate impacted that. But you'll see the occupancy, the occupancy percentage at the top, I mean, the gold is the average daily rate in '24, and the brown is the average daily rate in '25. That spike is the U.S. Open. And then you'll see the occupancy in '25 versus '24. So, we started the year, we started the year lower than the prior year, and then in July, you see that switch, and then this year is starting to trend upward. So, we keep an eye on that for our predicted revenues, and also, again, to try to determine, you know, what our market looks like rate-wise. And if we start to see prior year dip, then we look at our strategies and do we need to make some adjustments in our strategies. So, this is getting more granular in the data that we look at to try to make decisions because we can react week to week and certainly month to month with those trends. And then the third piece of data I'm going to show you is probably what you really are most interested in, is the data from the Lee County Athletic Park. So, we have a product called Placer AI that we obtain a yearly contract for. We partner with for that contract along with Sanford Area Growth Alliance in downtown Sanford. And so, it is, it's a data product that can look at people count, how many people came to a place at a certain period of time. We use this oftentimes to pull data for events, so we can, after an event, we can go back and we can pull the location or lasso the location and see how many people entered that lassoed area during that period of time. What this report will tell you, so I've pulled today for you the Lee County Athletic Park's data for the past six weeks. It'll tell you the total visits. It'll tell you the total visitors, and that is people who came to the park, not necessarily people who don't live in Sanford. But on this report, a visitor is someone who came into the area that we're looking at. The length of their stay, the average length of stay, the traffic patterns that brought you to that location, demographics of the people who were there, and where they came from. So, hopefully, our link works. And we'll show you that information. Maybe we'll show you that information. While we're waiting, I'll just say a couple of things that a visitor asset, that the TDA, the first slide you saw are the priorities that we have this year for the TDA for leisure visitors. So, that would be golf, weddings, business leisure, and now sports tourism has moved into our top, you know, our top realm of populations that we're trying to market to. We've done a couple of things to be able to support the Lee County Athletic Park. First thing we did was build a landing page on our website. That's for sports tourism. Tells people where to eat while they're here, geared towards the population that would be coming to a tournament, lets them know about accommodations, lets them know about events and attractions in the area. And so, we built that to be able to share, but also, we have reached out to tournament directors and shared that with them, because if players are coming here, we want them to make the most use of those dollars. The next thing that we've done is sponsored bleacher wraps at the park, and so they should be coming up to, same thing. You're already in destination. We'll be able to drive you to those assets to tell you what's close by to come, stay and dine. And then we scheduled a photo shoot for November 2nd. So, what we find is, you know, you need assets to be able to promote, you need digital assets to be able to promote to your population as you want. So, that is happening as well. I do have a PDF of that report. We're working on it, as well as the login for the, I guess I'll give you a spoiler alert. In the past six weeks, you've had just over 40,000 people visit Lee County Athletic Park. That is tremendous. You did have a spike on the day of your grand opening, so that's your most visited day. The past two weekends, there's been tournament play there, and there have been about 2,000 people through the park each of the past two weekends. Our hotel report that you saw, you know, you don't really see that spike yet, and if we have tournament players staying here. On the report that we hope to show you, it will show that, it shows you where people went before they went to a location and where they went when they left. And so, we can see one of those locations is a hotel in town. So, lots of times, they're going from McDonald's to the park, to the gas station, and, you know, that's pretty typical. But on our top 10 places of destination is one of our hoteliers. We've also had anecdotal feedback from our hoteliers that, you know, they had ballplayers staying with them over the weekend. It's hard to judge right now because we have other assets that are drawing overnights. I know one hotel last weekend was full of weddings, and so, you know, tournament players couldn't stay there because weddings- players couldn't stay there because weddings were already there. And these things are booked out far in advance, of course. So you may have some lack of availability right now for this population. The weekend before that, there was a car show, and all the rooms were booked. So things like that are impacting it now, but we, that's why we wanted to look at that over time. We want to see where that occupancy goes over time, and continue to check back with our hoteliers for that. We also have some in-destination planned for our hotels where, you know, if you're staying there, you can get more information. And we already have that, but we're going to more of an integrated with door clings, posters for the elevators, to try to get people to stay longer and spend more dollars while they're here. So that process is also underway. I'll stop here and say, do you have questions?
Questions for Wendy. Commissioner Sharp?
No questions, but thank you for all you do.
Sure, absolutely.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Borbick?
Oh, sorry. I see action.
No questions, but thank you, and really excited to see how, you know, the data that you're pulling will be able to hone in on, you know, utilizing all the stuff that we have to offer around here. So, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Exciting news, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No, but thank you again for what you do, Wendy.
Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Thank you Wendy.
Absolutely. This is something I thought I wanted to point out. It will show you the pathing to a location. And so this is interesting, because most people are entering the LCAP from the bypass, but they're coming from the Lillington side, not the north side. And then the second highest path in is along Broadway Road, coming from the Jonesboro Corridor towards, towards the LCAP. So that's something you, you will want to look at, you know, when you think about signage, so you can continue to track where the, where the population's coming from to enter the facility. Or if there's traffic issues, you can look at this to see where people might be encouraged to enter and exit from. Here's what I was saying, where we can see people are coming and going to. So Circle K and Shops of Sanford, which is where Walmart is, is your number one place that people are coming to and from when entering the property. Lots of shopping, lots of dining, which we like to see. And then you'll see that again, adjust over time as people begin to stay for longer periods of time while they're here. And so when you have the live report, you can zoom out and see all of the counties that are feeding into, this is everyone, this is the origin cities that are coming into the LCAP. It is very sensitive. It will be, when we scroll down, if we can scroll down on that side, when we have the report, it will be down, if there's one person from a zip code, they'll be listed. So it goes in order from most people coming from a zip code to a property to the lease by count. And then the household income. So it'll show your average household income of someone entering the park, and their median income as well. Then finally, you'll get your racial profile of visitors to the park, and the visitor variance over time. Age, you'll see your age span, and the hourly visits. So this can be important, too. So, you know, if you see that your light bill is higher at the park, well, you had a lot of evening visits. So this is something that we often work with festivals or events to say, well, these are your peak hours. That we pull, where are their other favorite places? Sometimes that will drive us to help to know, well, these people will be there. They might see information there about the park, or you might just wanna know. This helps build a profile of the customer that's coming to that asset. So in closing, I'll just say, we are really enjoying promoting this asset for our community. It's a beautiful park. Thank you all for what you've done to bring that, to bring that to us. And we'll continue to look at ways that we can help support the visitors when they're in destination, and also to help drive more here.
I have a question for you.
Great.
You know, the blue signs that are along the highway that have area featured. We have one for Zandly Park, just prior to Kelly Road, Kelly Drive. Do you have the insight on how to get one for the Broadway Road exit?
Yes, we can definitely work, yeah, we can work with DOT to look at. But that would be a question for the Commissioners, too, or maybe county staff, is to be what type of information you want to be there. You want to be directing people into the park and to other places, or just into the park. So that's a conversation we can have.
Okay.
That is something that we have been looking into and is underway. That is something that we have been looking into and is underway.
Okay, thank you. I know we mentioned it in the past, but I was just thinking she had the right button to push. Thank you. Any, any other questions for Wendy? Thank you.
Thank you.
So Wendy, you and your husband have been to so many athletic parks, and your daughter. What are people going to Lowe's for?
Well, that's a good, honestly, you can buy work gloves, so it's batting gloves, if you left yours at home. I can say that with a hundred percent assurance. So, yeah, you never know. But there are things like that, that you will run, yeah, that you will run. Or you just are gonna do a home improvement project on the way home, either way.
I noticed no one, that Dunham was not in the top ten.
Yeah, I noticed that, too. Dunham Sports.
Well, because they're buying their batting gloves at Lowe's on their way out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. We have Managers' Report, monthly financial reports.
Good evening Commissioners, I'll be quick. I'm here just to summarize a few of the reports in front of you. To start with the financial report for September, we are at sixteen point seven six percent of our ad valorem budget. The target expenditures for the end of September was twenty-five percent, to which a few of our departments did go over, but it was due to the encumbrance, or the inclusion of annual agreements and encumbrances. Again, if we were to remove these, none of our departments would be over. Okay. Now, with respect to the sales tax collections for July, again, these run three months behind, we are at nine point five seven percent above this period last year. And I am here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Jim. Commissioner Martin?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
No questions, thank you Gene.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Borbick?
No sir, just wanna say nine point five was better than the, like, three point one it was like a couple months ago.
Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Managers' Report.
Yes. Update on ongoing projects, Lee County Athletic Park. As you know, we've reached substantial completion on this project back on September twelfth. We are now in the closeout process. On final completion, will occur after all open items, such as punch lists, credits, and pay apps are settled and closed. Staff has continued to work with the architect and Sanford contractors to close out punch list items and credit on maintenance items. Over the past month, Lee County Athletic Park assisted multiple tournaments on diamond fields and rentals on the multipurpose fields. The feedback has been overwhelmingly positive. NC DOT, drive entrance work, pavement connection, and permanent traffic signals remains open and will be closed out as Highway forty-two expansion work is completed in this area. For the library, construction continues, obviously. Exterior efforts are focused on getting the building weather tight before the winter months, and the roofing system installation is wrapping up. Windows and storefront installation continue with some challenges and delays on delivery from the subcontractor. The construction manager is reprioritizing other trades to keep the schedule on track. There are no delays to the overall project schedule at this time. Weather days have been submitted based on all rain days logged to this point, with a request incorporated in the contract cost and schedule. On the interior, drywall has been installed, and painting is in process with primer application finishing up on the walls and ceiling. Millwork materials are being ordered and fabricated in preparation for installation. Tile work in the bathrooms and the temporary power connection have been completed. The HVAC systems installation initial setup are in process. There are a few items under change orders have been identified. Have our staff expect current allowances to cover the cost. Details will be provided at the next Board of Commissioners meeting on those. The historic courthouse project, the roof replacement continues with copper work and is about ninety to ninety-five percent complete. The big brick parapet and corner chimneys on the roof have been reworked and stabilized by the masonry subcontractor. Final work to complete the project includes installation of copper coping on top of the parapet and chimneys. The coping was changed from precast stone to copper in effort to reduce the overall schedule. This project is delayed and will finish later than planned. The project's original completion date was for September fifteenth, but after adjusting for weather days and court days, the updated completion date was set to October fourth. Delays have resulted from unforeseen issues discovered with the masonry during demolition of the old roof system. The repair process took longer than normal and is included, as it included, the State Historic Preservation Office having to provide the recommendation for repair, reviewing the design provided by the architect, and then approving the repair work completed by the contractor. Staff are working with the contractor to determine updated finished date and review the project budget. Staff are now anticipating a November completion date. We've had several different change orders. Here, I will not read you all those details. We did have a couple of change orders that did result in a total cost change of fifteen thou, thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents, but we are still within our budget. General services expansion, we have issued an RFQ, or Request for Qualifications for Architectural Selection. Five firms submitted bid packages which were reviewed internally. Mosley Architects was selected as the preferred architectural firm to design the general services expansion and oversee construction administration. Staff are currently working with Mosley to approve and execute a contract to allow design to begin. Settle shutdown. Just wanted to tell you, we are continuing to monitor the potential impacts of the federal shutdown on county programs. However, information has been difficult to obtain. Our social services director did receive the letter that was attached in your package regarding SNAP benefits for November from the US Department of Agriculture and Food Nutrition Services. In the letter, the USDA states, if the current lapse in appropriations continues, there will be insufficient funds to pay for full November SNAP benefits. We also received notification today that the state has decided to delay the disbursement for November benefits at this time. We have no definitive information provided yet as to exactly how, or if this will impact Lee County residents receiving assistance, other than we did receive that notification today. The majority of our funding is received on a reimbursement basis. And in other past shutdowns, we, reimbursement for expenses during the shutdown have been received. We have not been able to obtain clear information on how expenses will be handled after this shutdown. We also have various reports there. I also want to bring to your attention a project that tax is working on, in case you were to get any calls or comments about this. We have been providing funding to the tax department for aerial photography of the county by the company called Eagleview. With this, that is allowing us to now process a project that comes with a second set of photographs. This is the Change Finder project. This aids us with the ability to cleanse our data, cleanse our data on our property record cards. We planned this prior to the upcoming 2027 reappraisal, so that we have good data. The outlines of improved structures on parcels are identified by Eagleview as match or don't match. Imparstals are flagged for office or field review. Our appraisers will be making changes to the properties this year. Our office will be sending notices to all property owners with changes in mid-February of 2026. This will provide taxpayers an opportunity to review the data and value. During the project, we may come in contact with taxpayers or other county departments to assist us with this data cleansing project. I also wanna make sure you understand that they could be finding properties, structures that have not been permitted. When that happens, they will be notifying the city. And so that could result in, you know, business owners or homeowners being notified and contacted. So just in case you get a phone call, that is what is going on. So that's all I have.
Thank you ma'am. Questions for the manager? Commissioner Sharp?
None.
Commissioner Reeves?
I've got one concerning the kids with special needs. Who's tracking that fund?
Can you explain to me a little bit more, Christian Reeves, I'm not sure I'm following you?
For education, or like assistance, like with Medicaid, Medicare, like the, what type of assistance? Is there a specific, a specific pot?
The federal government was providing some funding for that program within the school system.
Okay, that's what I know. I have not been monitoring that. I would, the schools, I would think, would be monitoring that. I can see if I can get an update on it for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Commissioner Borbick?
Yes, I think my only question is with the eagle, what, did you say Eagle Eye?
It's Eagle Eye.
It's a really good movie, if you've never seen that one.
Eagle Eye.
Eagle View, okay. If, if certain discrepancies have come up, are we, has they have, has the tax office thought of how to, I guess, one, alerting citizens, but providing a buffer or some type of thing to be able to, like, if there's something that they're gonna owe, do they owe it immediately type thing? Is there gonna be some type of, are they gonna be able to discuss, or be able to go for the proper permit that they didn't know they needed, or, you know, like, I'm trying to think of the word.
Michael, I'm gonna let you handle that one.
Hello, Mr. Brown. I didn't know you were still here.
Good evening, how are y'all? As far as any changes that we find, we'll certainly try to look at those changes and see, you know, about adding those to the twenty-six tax year. So their twenty-six tax bill would be adjusted. We'll change that January one, we'll notify them mid-February, send them a notice. And then for the twenty-six tax bill, it'll be within that. So, you know, there are, there are things that we're finding that we're adding to the record. There's also things that we're taking away from the record where either old buildings or barns have been torn down or such. So we're making changes to the plus and to the negative with the program. So hopefully, when we get through making all of our changes, we'll come back to you and tell you what we did as a end result of the program.
I just, you know, sometimes when things like this come up, it may be not necessarily the current owner who didn't realize the, that thing, or something building needed, didn't have the right permit, it wasn't disclosed, or it was a foreclosure, or, you know, some other things that come up. So I just didn't know, grace period, that was what I was looking for. So some type of...
Some of the things we've been trying to look at is, is trying to, you know, maybe just contact other departments, such as Central Permian, or something like that, trying to get addresses, or such as that, where we didn't have, where we have structures out there, and it's like it's a business or a home, we're trying to get an address. So we're trying to get information like that. So, you know, whether they got a permit or not, that's out of our hands. You know, we, we don't get into that part of it, and that's a whole nother division of departments. That's for them to work with.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Any more questions?
No sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Lovick?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Martin?
I do have a question, actually. It, it seems, like, are there guidelines about how this drone that's coming over and taking pictures of private property? Like, what are the guidelines for, like legally?
Well, we're not doing it by drone. We're actually doing it, it's actually private airplanes that are actually flying with photography equipment on the airplane over the county. So we just had our, our last flight flown.
There's just no secrets anymore, is there?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you ma'am.
And I'm saying, wow, I mean, that, that's a strong camera.
So the, the photographs are actually taken are straight down photographs, and forty-five degree angle photographs, so we can actually see four sides around a property. We can use, I mean, they're up to the standard. We actually can use them to measure, you know, wall length and such, wall height. But we get very good quality photos.
Thank you.
And it's done when there's no leaves on the trees?
That is when we'd like... That is when we'd like to have it done, yes.
Therefore, you shouldn't be out sunbathing.
January and February is typically the flight time.
Unless you're an escort. I'll leave it at that. Thank you. Anything else from Mr. Brown? Okay. Commissioner Comments, we'll start with Commissioner Martin.
I remember we had a woman, I can't recall her name, who would write to us regularly about balloons being released, and she wanted action, right, taken on from part of the board. I saw that as of October 1st, it is now illegal to release bulk balloons in North Carolina, so many congratulations to all the grassroots work that went into getting that change. That's all I have.
Commissioner Lovick?
I have no comments, thank you.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbik?
Uh, no, sir.
Commissioner Reeves?
I'll give you a motion later.
Commissioner Sharp?
Just real quick, I was on my way in this morning, and I was at, let's see, Lee Avenue and by the enrichment scene, but I was coming towards the courthouse, and the sun was out, and I was going, and the courthouse, I like to, had to put my-
Visor?
The copper?
Yeah, the copper, man, it was awesome. But it's really, it's really standing out, and it looks good, so. Thank you, Brandon, if you're still here.
Thank you for those of you that hung in there to the last minute. Of course, staff has always got to be doing that, but thank you very much, we appreciate all everyone is doing for the county. Before we close, just a reminder, please drive safely, wear your seatbelts, and no speeding. May I have a motion to adjourn? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? We're now adjourned, thank you very much.